Working on Town Functions First. Planning and Development Services is the first item, that's account 1046 on page 135. And I believe we have town staff here?
No comments.
Oh, just one thing before we get started. When you are moving a number, you need to move the total appropriation, which is usually in the first row of numbers at the top of the page for each account. So you want to move the total appropriation or some variation thereof. There was some confusion. So, having said that, we'll accept a motion for account 1046, Planning and Development Services?
So moved.
I didn't move a number, I need one of you to move a number.
I'm making a motion to move $1,316,531.
Moved by Maravica, is there a second?
Second.
Second did by Franco. Okay, we're open for discussion with the staff. Would you like to present anything before we begin?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Here with me this morning, Paige Bronk, our Economic and Community Development Manager, Kevin Quinn, our Manager of Inspection Services, and Deb Jones couldn't make it because her daughter's getting married today, so I thought that was someone important.
We'll give her a pass.
I thought I'd give her a pass today. So, in years past, we've spent a fair amount of time during some of our budget presentations giving some of the major highlights over the past year. We just gave a presentation maybe about two months or so back to the council, also to the RTM, about some of the bigger projects we've been working on within the Office of Planning and Development Services over the past year. I still want to hit on a couple of highlights, but wasn't planning on going into the hour-long deep dive that we normally do about all the things that we're working on. I know you have a lot to do this morning, and it's a Saturday, so I don't want to waste anyone here's time. So, there's a lot of good successes that we've seen, and, you know, sometimes people say, "Oh, well, you know, all the planning, the economic development initiatives that we're working on, how is that growing in the grand list?" It takes time for some of those things to start showing up on the grand list. But with that said, very recently, we've seen the new U-Haul facility being constructed. Central Hall is under construction, finally. There's 146 apartments over on Route 12 that are starting construction, they've been doing the site work on that. We've seen this past year, $18 million that's being reinvested in Branford Manor, all things that we've been helping to push along, the new Savings Institute building on Route 1, the new Aldi's, as well as the complete renovation of that whole plaza. So we're seeing a lot of good things from an economic development perspective. I think sometimes it's easy to forget that, oh, this, you know, Jiu-Sushi moved out of their old building, and now they're moving into a new one and renovating that. Home Salon moved out of something that they were renting before, bought their own. So we're seeing a lot of our smaller businesses grow and expand, shifting into new spaces and renovating properties along the way. These are all really good initiatives and good things that are happening for us. And, you know, I think an analogy of sometimes looking at how long it takes for things to happen, I think back at, looking at downtown Mystic about seven, eight years ago, the streetscape was in tough shape, the sidewalks were in tough shape. The town took a big leap, working with the state, did the Streetscape project, fixed that. Underground did the utilities, made it really beautiful. There was a lot of pressure to start developing in Mystic. Oh, then we realized the regulations were a little too strict for changes of uses or modification of uses. We changed the regulations. A lot is happening. I mean, anytime people go to Mystic, you can see we have a lot of demand for restaurants. Now we're getting complaints about the noise for restaurants, things are going so well. So, again, we're starting to, in some areas, delve into some of the problems that we have dealing with, the success that we're dealing with. So, again, a lot of good things have happened. Continuing forward in things that relate to our budget for this year, for this, rest of this fiscal year and calendar year, we continue to plan on finalizing the tax increment financing districts. We hope to have four of those districts adopted by the end of the calendar year, the two within the town at Centigrade on Route 117, 184, and Route 1 downtown Groton, as well as, we've been working very well with the city to have the Thame Street, as well as five corners. We expect significant development to happen once those districts are in place. Again, you've heard enough about the $80 million mixed use development at 184 and 117, that we will get a proposal on that once that district is in place. We've been talking to a number of property owners in the Route 1 corridor and some along Thame Street. So I see a lot of potential for that. Again, it's going to take a little time for those things to get onto the grand list, but we'll see some positives from that. Another big project that we'll be wrapping up, we hope by the end of this calendar year, is our zoning regulatory rewrite. That's been taking up a lot of staff time, a lot of time on all of us. And one other project that we'll be starting on sometime in the next couple of months will be our Economic Development Strategic Plan. It was something that was budgeted this past year. We did a market analysis, but that was grabbing more of a snapshot in time of what is happening in Groton, but we never really put together a broad-based plan for where we want to go. We've been taking the recommendations out of the market analysis. That's a smaller project, but still something of significance that'll lay out the groundwork for things that we're doing. Again, these are all things that are happening now, but it takes a little bit of time to get them done. It's, you know, we talk about doing things and budgeting things, and, all right, great, the money's allocated, now we have to go do the work type of opportunity. And, a lot of this, that, of what we've been doing, you know, I've heard questions from people of, "Well, what has Planning and Economic been doing over the past few years?" We've been trying to build a foundation. We had no marketing materials, we had no brand, no economic development website. The town's had a really hard time in the past trying to market all their excess schools, all their excess property, because there was no good platform for getting it out there. We have that now with our website, with our cut sheets, with our branding, our marketing materials, going to ICSC conferences. We're getting a lot of interest, significant interest. The Mystic Education Center, we're reviewing proposals for that now. That's been, the selection period of proposals has been closed. Now we're trying to whittle that down to, from all the proposals we received, who are we going to pick as the preferred developer working with the state? That will be tens of millions of dollars of investment going in there on a property that's not on the grand list today. A significant amount of interest in Groton Heights, we'll be issuing an RFP for that sometime in the next few months. Been doing a lot of marketing on that. And we've continued to get a lot of interest in the Seeley School property as well, and people even talking to us about Pleasant Valley, which we haven't even gotten the keys to yet. The only special project that we're really going to be working on in this upcoming year's budget is excess property management. That's something that, now that, again, that foundation of things has really been laid out, we can put a lot more focus on rolling those projects, those excess properties out over the next few years. So, that's kind of the overview. Staffing-wise, we're staying very similar to where we were. Every year, we're making modifications to some of our staff, whether it's changing some of the positions. This past year, we changed one of our Building Official 2 positions to a Building Inspector 1 position, trying to get someone in the entry level, so we can start training them and build them here. We've done that with two of our planner positions over the past couple of years. So as our needs within the department change, to respond to what's happening in the market, the town, we're constantly trying to change what we have as far as staff within the department. It's not just what we have today is what we're going to continue to be. If there's a growing need or a shrinking need, you'll see me bring those requests before you, one way or the other.
Counselor Maravica.
Yeah, John, how about the airport? You haven't mentioned anything about the airport. I know there's things going on down there. Can you keep a highlight on that?
Sure. So, we worked developing the Airport Development Zone, which is similar to an enterprise zone. We've been talking with the state, meeting with them a little bit about some of their, they have excess properties around it. I know that they've changed their management structure a little bit. We've also been hearing that there may be an increase in flights coming in, or maybe even a separate carrier coming in. Haven't seen anything pen to paper yet, but it's something that's certainly on our radar. It's a phenomenal infrastructure asset to the town.
Another question, Streetscape 3. Have we done anything on that to finish it up? It's on Route 1 or 215, that little corner.
Yes, yes. I want to say, a couple months back, we met with the manager with Public Works to look at some projects. I think some of those were being priced out to figure out what we can do with that.
It hadn't filled through the crack.
No, it hasn't fallen through the crack, so. I know it's something that's still moving along. Public Works has been working on that with the manager, with us.
Thank you.
So it's, you know, juggling things, making sure no balls fall.
Just in reply, I believe I forwarded this to everybody. We had an email from Al Valente, who goes to the CAA Board meetings on our behalf. He said there were two quick verbal updates regarding the airport. Landmark submitted conceptual plans, still some environmental work to be done, and FAA approvals in place. Project to include 30,000 square feet of hangar development, a 28 to 30-room hotel and a restaurant. Also in early discussions with Mohawk Northeast on more hangar space as well. Counselors of Perry.
We have heard you speak before, and we have been encouraged by the progress that you're making. But this is a budget meeting, and so there were some issues on the budget that, questions I have, and I'm sure that they're explainable, but I noticed on Personnel Services on page 137, the very first line, it says in 2017 Personnel Services were $1,33,819. But on page 139, where you sum all of the personnel costs, it's $1,46,490, the very bottom line. Can you tell me about that? And I think the numbers across the board vary. I know that the final number on page 137, the manager's recommendation is $1,200,133. And on page 139, it's $1,66,892.
Sure. I think that's pretty easy to explain. So Personnel Services, when you look at page 139, that bottom number, the $1,46,490, that is purely salaries. When you look at the Personnel Services, that includes salary, overtime pay, longevity, salary adjustments, regular part-time pay, wage continuation, and social security. So there's a lot of other things. So 139, we're looking strictly at just per each body, what is each person's, just their salary. Then there's other numbers that are incorporated into that.
I see. Thank you.
Okay.
And I would also note that there have been small raises of a couple of thousand dollars across the board in your department, which I'm not saying that critically, I'm just saying that there have been people complaining that everybody wasn't getting a raise, but it appears that everyone has gotten raises in both of the last two years.
And that, a lot of that is due to the union contracts?
Yes.
There's steps, there's raises. And then also, within that chart, I've gotten questions in the past about why some of these numbers might be, for example, if you look at the Inspector 1, Inspector 1 construction in 2018, the estimated number's $39,000, whereas it's $60,000 in '19. That person started not quite mid-year, but not July 1. So sometimes you'll see these numbers are a little bit off, or lower one year and much higher, and it's because we've had a significant amount of staff turnover in the past three and a half years.
I also noticed that operating expenses have gone down appreciably. Why is that?
A number of reasons. One, in some years, we've asked for a lot of money to work on, whether it was the market analysis, the zoning regulatory changes, tax increment financing, some of these bigger projects. This year, when we were first putting the budget together, meeting with John, we had put some other requests in there for an open space management plan, looking at climate change and sea level rise, and looking at, that was a tough budget year, we took those out. There are other things that we want to focus our time on right now. So we've been doing a lot more planning, groundwork, economic development planning, and that's where a lot of those operating expenses have been coming in. This year, we don't need as much. This year, we're going to be doing a lot more actual staff implementation of the things we've been working on.
Thank you.
One other thing I did want to mention over by the airport. So there's the State Airport, just outside of the airport, there's also the Airport Industrial Park. We've seen some growth in businesses there. So there's beer brewing, Mystic Cheese, and a new large sports fitness facility that's going in under construction over there also.
Counselor Heed.
I want to back up for a second, just give you a little perspective to where we are. Let's say thank you for all of your work. The proposed fiscal year 2019 budget is $128,636,398, which is a $7.8 million increase, or a 6.5 percent increase. Our mill rate is flat. So, what you're doing is very important. Questions on the building and permits. It says $340,000. How many permits, how do you charge them? What does that mean?
So, I mean, Kevin can probably get a little more nitty-gritty on this. I mean, that's building permits, mechanical, all electrical. The number this year, actually, if you look at adjusted 2018, where we estimate it, but we also did increase our fees this past year, so we do expect some more revenue from that. That was passed by the council, being consistent, looking at surrounding communities. I don't know if you want more specific of how are we charging, or what are we charging for?
Just, that's some income that we're counting, right?
Yes. Yeah, I think a lot of times people forget about that revenue side of things. We're not just costing the town, you know, $1.3 million, we're also bringing in, you know, $340,000 or more. Back in '18, we, you know, it was 300, I'm sorry, '17, $273,000. This year, we're estimating $280,000. And I think we're giving a lower estimate on the '19, just because we don't want to overestimate that type of number.
But the '19 number actually goes up?
Yes, because the fees have gone up.
I got you.
What we're actually charging has gone up, because before, our fees were much lower than our surrounding communities.
Counselor Franco.
I'd like to thank you for everything you've been doing. There's been a lot of things going on, and I've been going to the zoning meetings myself, learning a lot of things. So we're basically relying on you to help develop our town, and we are at a critical stage with Electric Boat, hiring so many people, and I think your department is huge for our town, and we're going to rely on you so much. So one of my questions is regarding line 10466 on page 137, is the long-range planning? You had originally asked for $93,000, and your, the manager has brought it down to three. What are we taking away?
Everything, no. Again, those were some of those nice-to-have projects, so I can take a quick look at those. And, you know, one thing, bigger picture, taking a step back, this past year, Electric Boat hired, I think it was about 1,800 people. A lot of the developers that we're dealing with right now recognize that EB's full ramp-up is going to be happening four, five years from now. So they're all getting ready, they're getting their ducks in a row, just as we are, but they don't, not everyone wants to build everything today, because all those new employees aren't here yet. So when people are thinking about how we're growing in the grand list, we know it's going to be five years from now, a lot's going to be happening at Electric Boat. Between now and then, there's still a ramp-up, but I, that's something when people say, "Well, why hasn't the grand list grown yet?" Well, the developers are getting in line and getting ready, but they don't want to have empty buildings and facilities that aren't being utilized. So, jumping over to 1046. So items that we had asked for included an open space management plan, planning for sea level rise in Groton's historic community, so looking, a lot of our historic areas, Mystic, aquatic, are all very, and, you know, a lot of our coastline, historic development subject to sea level rise. And a coastal access trail plan were all items that we had asked for, some level of funding that was cut out of the budget. Those are things I will be asking you for again next year, or things that we'll want to plan for, things that we will need to do.
So they're things that can wait?
They're things that can wait.
Okay.
But we don't want to wait too long.
Okay.
Counselor Overeem.
First of all, I think you do an excellent job, and I've been able to see the differences, the changes, they're enormous, and I think you will bring up our grand list. I have kind of a simple question. In this budget, because you can't really see everything, is there a full-time assistant for EDC?
Thank you. No, there isn't. If there was one thing that, if you asked me, what could I do differently, how could I put something back in this budget? It was less than $7,000 that would take to make our administrative assistant position that's specific to economic development from part-time to full-time. Right now, it's budgeted for 30 hours a week, we really need that at 35 hours a week. That is a staff person who is doing a critical amount of work, is also critical work for our economic development function, helping us with our webpage updates, which we need to do every week. If we're not doing it every week, it's getting stagnant. We want to start rolling out more of a social media campaign, so that that helps us get more clicks, more hits on Google searches and other things. All of that is only possible if that position goes to full-time. So if there was one, so no, that's not in the budget. If there was one thing I could ask for, that would be a little bit over the manager's budget, it would be that.
Can I comment on that?
Yeah.
I think that is, and I want to reiterate, that's probably the most significant item that's not being addressed at this point, given that that position is critical to our marketing, our promoting, the website. It took us six months to develop, launch, and get the website where we're at, and there are additional chapters that are yet to be released with that website. One of the platforms that's critical to our marketing is the social media interface, and I'll be perfectly honest, it's very difficult to work with someone who is there part-time, but you also rely on them to be the main conduit for much of the inquiries and the social media interaction, and to keep the updates going and push the data out. I have to say, I think that's actually a very important and borderline critical function. We really need that position to be full-time.
Town Manager.
Just to point out, is that set at 20 hours currently, and we're going to 30?
Yes.
We are increasing it to 10 hours, just not to the 35, because I do agree it's a critical position. And I would love to see it at 35, it's just difficult decisions, so.
In this year, we've been able to move it to approximately 30 hours a week because of some of our salary savings. So that Inspector 1 position that I mentioned before, that got filled later in the year, we took some of the salary savings from that, and we're able to bring that position from 20 to 30 hours for this year, because we needed it. It was something that was sorely needed within the department, and we did request that to be a full-time position. Working with John, he made it in the proposed budget, a 30-hour-a-week position. If there was one thing we could ask for, would be to bring that to 35, to full-time.
Do you have a further follow-up?
I beg your pardon?
Do you have a follow-up?
Well, with that in mind, and I'm sorry, John, I couldn't hear what you said. I'd like to move another figure.
You have a question?
I beg your pardon?
Go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to move the figure of $1,323,531, I think it'd be.
Can you repeat it one more time, please? Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Moved by Overeem, seconded by Franco. You're not obligated to, but would you like to share your rationale?
Yeah. Having been part of this, and I have been for many, many years, and I attend all the meetings, and I see the struggle that does go on, and I know that if we could, in fact, make this small adjustment, it's going to make a very big adjustment in the capabilities of the EDC. So I would ask you all to, it's a very small number, and I would ask you all to consider it, because I think we would have enormous results from that number being changed. So if you can have faith in what I'm saying, I'd ask you to vote in favor of that.
Just to the Town Manager, what was the reasoning why we didn't go to the amount that?
Just to make it clear, first of all, I'm supportive of that position, increasing hours. I kind of split the difference somewhat, not equally, going from, it's currently at 20 hours, the request was for 35, just because of the tough budget cycle, I put it at 30. I, however, am supportive of putting it to 35, if that's what the council wishes. I'm supportive of many things, you know, but just tough, a tough year to, and we had tough decisions had to be made.
Counselor Parker hasn't spoken yet.
Point of order.
Counselor Parker hasn't spoken yet, Mr. Sperry.
Point of order.
Yes?
We have two motions on the floor.
Correct.
One, you have to, either the second motion is amendment of the first, or it is, the first one has to be removed from the floor.
You can have three numbers on the floor at the same time.
Three motion.
You can have the main motion, and then two amendments. And when we vote, we will vote in reverse order. So we would vote the last amended number, and if that fails, then we would go back to the prior one. Counselor Parker.
So, I'm looking at the Office Assistant 2, that's the position we're talking about. You requested three, but you have two already in there. Are they both part-time?
No, those are both full-time positions. One is supporting the Building and Inspections Division.
Okay.
Front, if you ever come to the front counter, you'll see Linda sitting off on the left-hand side, and then Kara, who supports the planning function, is sitting on the right-hand side. The, part of the job that sometimes gets forgotten or overseen, overlooked, I should say, is just the amount of boards and commissions that we staff, preparing packets, doing minutes, attending meetings. That takes up a significant amount of administrative time. Both Kara and Linda, those two full-time Office Assistant, two positions, also are the front line for when people coming in, dealing with a lot of more, you know, simple permit questions, process, and then if things get more complicated, others can be pulled in.
Thank you. So, can you please clarify which line we're looking at for the amendment? Because the Office Assistant 2, two of them are already at 35 hours.
Correct.
So are you looking at the Executive Assistant, OPDS?
No, so it's actually not within the...
So it's a part 5109?
Yeah, so when you look at personnel expenses, if you go on to page 138, 5110, that regular part-time, the manager's number is 38953.
Okay.
So that number would increase, and if it went to full-time, it would be taken out of there and put into that Office Assistant, Office Assistant 2, and that number would go up by the full amount, and that other number would zero out.
I was misreading that as FD that I was looking at. Second question is, you have, we have one inspector for construction. How will that be impacted when we start construction on the middle school? Is one person in your department going to be able to take care of both the movement on the middle school and the two elementary schools, as well as handle normal town functions? Or will another one be brought in as part of the bond money for the new schools?
I think we're working on that one still, of exactly what the plan is. So there's an Inspector 1, there's also an Assistant Building Inspector, or, I'll tell you, Assistant Building and Zoning Official, and then there's Kevin. So, I mean, there's, there's a few people within the department that are working on things. Those are significant projects. In the past, I believe when the high school was built, there was a special inspector brought in just for that. I don't know if we've quite crossed that bridge yet.
Yeah, yeah. We'll figure it out, you know, we'll charge it to the school ultimately, if we have to bring in a contractual inspector, or whatever we have to do for a short-term basis.
Okay, and then the other question, I'm sorry, go ahead.
When we did the high school and the two elementary schools, we did hire a separate inspector for that, but it was covered by the cost of the project. The cost wasn't borne by the town.
Okay, that's good to know. And then the other thing is, you had mentioned, one of the things that were eliminated, the nice-to-have, you'll be coming back to it later, had to do with climate change and the impact on our community. I noticed you have a NOAA-funded extreme weather event project that you have grants for.
Yes.
Can any of the other items, can we seek grants to cover any of that, or is there nothing that is quite that large?
If we can, we will. I haven't seen a lot of grant-specific projects for the things that we're looking for. Also, the, that's a grant project that we're not the lead on.
The one that's in here?
The one that we mentioned, the NOAA one. UConn is the lead on. The problem that we've been seeing with grants, as each year goes by, is the amount of administration to get the money. Sometimes it's not worth the amount of, the money that you get isn't worth the amount of paperwork and time justifying what you're doing over the course of that grant. So it's getting more and more difficult. If we get pulled in as a partner... So it's getting more and more difficult. If we get pulled in as a partner, we're not the ones that have to deal with that administration, which, there are other organizations, UConn, they have the abilities, they have a lot of staff, they're constantly dealing with grants. That's how a lot of their funding comes in for special projects like this, their research projects. We don't have one person on staff that just deals with grant administration. Nor am I proposing that right now within my department.
The town manager wanted to reply.
I was just going to mention, I do find several of these projects to be critical that we took out. My concern is not only money, but just the amount of things they have to do to get done this year, that they need to get through some things before they can take on more projects. So that was part of my, let's, you know, get the zoning rewrite done, and that'll free up a lot of staff time and get some other things done. Then we can move on to some of these next projects.
Councilor Atwater?
I realize this is worthwhile. I would sort of hope, or maybe recommend, that as your fee increase brings in more revenue, maybe some of that can be applied to the $7,000 sometime in the course of the year, to make this a full-time position.
That's, thank you. Unfortunately, that's not how our budgeting process works. I can't, those aren't revenues that come directly to me. Those go to the general fund.
I understand, but just, you know, in theory.
Yes, yes. Well, yes, we could say, because our fees are going up by, you know, we're estimating $60,000, then this is a net, you know, a net neutral. We're actually going to be bringing in more money next year than we're asking for increases. So I think it would be-
So bring in 67, and we'll be even.
Yeah, we're bringing in well more than 67.
Councilor Heatt?
I have two questions. First, what's the difference between inspector one and inspector two? I mean, I see the salary difference on here. Inspector one's salary is, what, 39,000? And inspector two is 61.
No, the inspector one was about 60. It was, they, that position started later in the year. So when you're looking at these estimated numbers, that's not necessarily the salary. That's what we spent. And if we'd gone one year back, you would have seen that same type of, not full, not full number matching the salary for probably two other positions because we've had some staff turnover. So the, basically, the duties of, we went out, advertised for an inspector two. We had some qualified candidates, but what they were looking for for salaries were way off of our charts. There's not a lot of younger people or newer people trying to get into the inspector trades, or there was a gap in time, I think maybe because of how the economy was going. So we said, let's see if we can get someone that's entry-level, that we will be training them, that we'll be showing them how to do it the right way, so we can start growing that next crop of people here. We've been doing the same thing on our planning end also. So we have two, planner one, or planner one slash zoning enforcement officer, trying to train these people on the job, paying them a little bit of a lower salary, still very qualified and capable people. So it's us teaching them how to do it, as opposed to them learning bad habits somewhere else.
All right. Second question. We had talked a few years ago about hiring somebody just to do grant writing. Is that something that we are still, that the town is still looking into?
We've kicked it around, and I, and we've got, I think Public Works has a, is there a grant writer in there? But they're focused more on the roads. As things have shrink, well, we've got a source of CCM. We talked to them about what grants are out there, where there's different resources we can go to. And we have, and they have experts in that. We haven't come across a lot of new grants. We haven't discovered. I'm not sure adding a person on, in a shrinking grant environment, really pays for itself at this point, when we have other resources to go to. So anytime we have a topic, we can go to these resources, say, hey, we have this project. What's out there? And you can actually pay them just on a one-time basis. If it's a good project and it's a one-time grant, you could actually contract with some of these agencies to actually write that grant for you, too, so you don't have to hire a person to do it.
Councilors of Perry and then Moravsek?
Now, the motion on the floor, I believe, is to appropriate 1,323, what is it?
23,531.
Okay.
Is what Council Overy moved.
However, when we look at the financing plan, we see that originally that the planning department would require 967,271 from the general fund, and the rest would come from income from their activities. I'd like to be sure that the taxpayers are not going to be asked and be assessed to pay the 1,323,000, is it? But are rather going to be asked to pay in the range of 980-some thousand because we have to anticipate the income that they're going to generate.
So how this would normally work is that the general fund contribution would be increased by whatever amount of increase the amendment was. So rather than 967, you would increase that by 7,000, so 974,000 would come from general fund revenue, which would indeed then come from taxpayer money.
I just want to be sure that we're not assessing the taxpayers on the basis of 1,320-some thousand, when in fact, we are, they're going to be asked to pay only 980,000.
Correct.
That's about a $400,000 difference.
It's a $7,000 difference, according to Council Overy's motion. Correct?
Right.
No, no, it's a hundred, it's about a $400,000, $980, $990 from 1,316, 1,136, is close to a $400,000 difference.
If I may?
Do you want to take a shot? Go ahead.
Yes. I think what this question relates to is just that, what's being taken from the general fund is the line item in our financing plan that says "general fund." The other fees are revenues that are coming into us based off of building permit fees. Those are not being assessed on the taxpayer, yes. So I mean, that's how we work with finance throughout the year, looking at the revenues that are coming in.
Okay.
Councilor Moravsek?
Yeah, I just wanted to answer that question that Council Hattie mentioned. There is a, supposedly to be a, an individual in Public Works that is assigned to grant writing. At least, we passed that a couple of years ago. I think when former Mayor Schmidt was on board.
Councilor Schmidt, you haven't spoken to. Is there anything you wanted to add to this today?
No, I just want to thank the planning department, because I think you're doing a fantastic job, that it's critical to the development of Groton and to increasing our grant list. And we do appreciate the many efforts that you've all made, and stand here to help you in any way that we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions at this time? Councilor Heatt?
Could you give us an update on what the plans are for signage around town? Because that's, it's a future CIP, but I think some people might be interested in knowing.
We've been working on the development of a sign plan, and we reiterate that. That is the product of the plan that comes from this particular effort. We've been working on that for the past year. We hired beta engineering to work with us on that. The purpose of the plan is to help orient people that come to work here, people that live here, visitors here, as to where they're at, and how to get to where they're going. The main idea is actually to develop gateway signage, so that when we come into key nodes within the town, people are welcomed in a positive way. And we also give them supplemental directions, so they know how to get to locations like electric boat, or downtown, or certain municipal locations. So we're actually closing in on finalizing that planning effort. There are a few detailed subsets within that. One deals with Mystic. And other subsections deal with pedestrian and municipal, pedestrian direction, and also municipal signage. So we would like some continuity regarding the signage throughout the town, so that we look unified, so that we look professional, and people have a real positive immediate reaction when they come to us. So that plan will be done. What we're lacking at the moment are funds to actually implement the plan. So many people have been involved, have said, when is the first sign going up? That's one of the challenges we always face with planning. We have a lot of things in our pipeline. Doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to happen without taking it to the next level. So that is why we need funding to begin implementing. We would like to have some pilot signs, some pilot first phases that go in, so that people can know what these are going to look like. And once they go in, and they can see how beautiful they are, attractive with the landscaping, once they see them, then they'll say, well, how are we going to do more? So the plan will actually be set up where we can phase the implementation, but we desperately need some funding to kick off the implementation.
And once that plan is finalized, we'll actually be coming to the council to give a very in-depth presentation on that, and we'll do the same for the RTM, because we want people to see what it is we're talking about, when we're asking for this money.
So just as relating to an item we voted the other evening, the sign for the library, the electronic sign for the library, is it going to be adaptable to whatever the new signage is? Because we would have to spend the money on that, and then have total new signage come in, and not be able to be appropriate or fit in with the new plans.
I think they're really separate.
You know, it's great to have that. You know, the rest will have a common theme, and isn't an electronic sign style. They're totally different things. It'll work fine. This is partly for, you know, informational, getting a variety of ongoing information. It's not directional signage for the library, as well as emergency management. We'll use it, too, to get emergency information out of there. So it's really a much different animal. They won't oppose each other, but they really are kind of separate.
So the framing of the electronic sign will be able to be adapted to fit with the style of the new signs, ideally?
Ideally.
Okay. All right, so are there any other questions? So just to reiterate the process here. So we have two numbers on the floor. We have the main motion, and then we have the first amended motion. We're going to vote the first amended motion first. If that fails, then it goes to the main motion. If the first amended motion is adopted, then we're done, and we move to the next account. So are there any process questions? Are we good with that? So everybody knows that we're voting. So if there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on account 1046, first amended motion, 1,323,531. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, can you keep your hands up, please? Opposed are Moravsek, Parker, Atwater, and Schmidt. Abstaining. So five in favor, four opposed, zero abstaining. So the first amended motion is adapted, adopted. I can't talk, it's too early. Did you get that? Are we good? Okay. I think that's it for your gentleman, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are on to account 1051 on page 140, human services. I believe Director Fondulis is with us today. So count 1051. I can take a motion if someone would like to move a number. Councilor Parker?
I move 610,523.
610,523, moved by Parker. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Moravsek. Good morning.
Good morning.
Would you like to make any remarks before we discuss?
The budget that I submitted to the town manager was basically a leveled service budget, in that we didn't ask for any new positions or any changes to our existing way of doing business in the department. The increase that occurred in the personnel services was because of the, the union negotiated increases. And the operating expenses are down because the vehicle fuel and vehicle maintenance for our staff car has apparently been taken out of our budget. We do have a very old staff car that we have very little mileage on, actually. It's old, but it has very low mileage, because we use it primarily for local trips to the food bank in New London, et cetera. So it has low mileage, but it's an older car. But Public Works took the vehicle fuel and vehicle maintenance out of our particular budget for that car. But, so we basically have a budget that hasn't changed as far as our personnel level. We are still, we serve the entire town of Groton, of course. We have no, there's no equivalent position in the city of Groton. The department remains very much dependent on contributions from citizens and organizations in the town to fund our financial assistance to the persons that we assist in the department. And I said this, I've been with the town now for, I think, 26 years, and I think every year I have said, the town is extremely generous. We are, we continue to be amazed at the generosity of everyone in the town. We rarely have to ask for food donations, or cash donations, or clothing, or gift donations during the holidays. People bring them. And it's just, it's quite satisfying to know just how generous the town is. And we continue to use our building as best we can to bring other programs into the community, such as the WIC program, such as the SNAP program, which is the food stamp program. And we've just started a Veterans Coffee House with TBCCA that we're very excited about. That seems to be bringing in more people every time it's held. So we love our building. We're very fond of our, of our, of our building, and use every square inch of it. We do share a small portion with the registrators of voters, and we're happy to have them there, because obviously, people that come in to register to vote can see what we're doing in human services, and learn something about us. And also, people we assist, we can encourage to register to vote. So it works, it works very well. So I would be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
I had one. In looking at the full-time employees, there's a financial assistant two?
Yes.
And I was just curious, could you explain what that individual does for human services, please?
She is responsible for managing all the accounts that we have, for paying the bills, for handling the payroll, handling any grants that we have coming into the department. Anything, anything financial going on in the department, donations handles the, although the town does not, is not responsible for the food locker fund that we maintain. That's through Mystic Congregational Church. The financial assistant two has a direct line with the church as far as sending donations to the church when they come in, asking if we need to buy certain items for the food locker. She'll ask for a check from the church, from the food locker account. So anything, grants, anything that we have financial, she is responsible for.
Councilor Moravsek?
Yeah. How much revenue do you make?
Do you get each year?
In donations?
Yeah.
Well, I think I listed here, upwards, we've averaged to be about maybe $400,000 that comes in as far as donations, and that's just not cash. That could be food, that could be other items that are donated to the department. But, and I, quite honestly, I think that may be a conservative figure. I've never added it up. I've never, we've never tried to price everything out, but I think that's probably a conservative figure.
Do you get any help from the state?
We have a couple of grants from the state, but that is, it's largely donations and contributions that come into the department.
And is social services unique to Groton?
Excuse me?
Is this unique to Groton? Do other towns have this type of services?
A human services department? In our area, Stonington, Norwich, and Groton, I think, are the three main towns that have a human services department. New London has, they have a, they have a director of human services, but I think her responsibilities are vastly different, and they don't really have a department that does what we do. There are many agencies in New London that provide services to that, to that community.
Thank you.
Councilor Heatt?
I recognize you're servicing probably the most vulnerable segment of society. So I don't mean cavalier, I don't mean to sound cavalier when I, when I say this, but are there, like, regional programs or different- are there like regional programs or different ways that we could accomplish the similar outcome while not necessarily funding a full department?
There are agencies like TBCCA that provide, that's a community action program for the region, excuse me, that provides certain services. But there would be nothing comparable to what we do as far as meeting with clients, determining what their needs are, and, and utilizing the various resources that we have available. There'd be no agency that would be comparable in doing that.
Could we, I mean, as opposed to totally outsourcing the entire department, are there
certain parts of the department that we could maybe partner with TBCCA or whatever to?
Well, we're already doing that to, to a great extent in that we run an energy assistance program that's actually TBCCA's program, but they don't have the staff that do come to Groton and actually take the applications. So we do that here, our social workers do that. And we partner with TBCCA to provide the WIC program here in our, in our department. We have the Renters Rebate Program, which is something that is actually handled through the state OPM, but again, it's on the local level, it's something that we manage through our department. Various energy assistance programs we handle that are managed by other entities, but, or owned, so to speak, by other entities, but we actually provide the hands-on to, to take the applications and qualify people for assistance.
So your department, then, is somewhat of a facilitator for the people of Groton. So you, and you reach out to all these networks that are listed in your highlights here, and you bring them, you connect the residents of Groton to all the different programs out there. So you're not actually providing these different things, you're the, you're the conduit for our constituents to access those programs that are available?
It's, it's a combination. Sometimes we are the, sometimes we are the, the hands-on providing the service, and sometimes we provide the space so that others can provide the service. But in many of the programs I just mentioned, we're doing the hands-on work of taking applications and qualifying people.
Does anyone else want to speak before Counselor Heath goes again? Okay, go ahead.
So we have eight people in the department, including three social workers and two counselors. I'm assuming the financial assistant can't be shared with another department, that's probably more for John, in terms of financial assistant, but could we do without one of these? Is there any space to cut, like?
Right now, we need every body that we have in the department doing the job that, that he or she is doing. Over the years, we have, I think in the time that I have been with the department, we have downsized about 15 positions altogether. We've lost, I shouldn't say lost, I have eliminated the three supervisory positions that we had at one time, so that we have no, I'm, I'm not here surrounded by supervisors because I'm it. And we have downsized in every, every area of our functioning. So we are now a pretty efficiently operating machine, so to speak, with, with the staff that we have, and I would be concerned if we were to lose anyone at this point, that we would, it would result in not being able to provide the same level of service that we do.
Did the town manager?
In terms of the financial position, I'd want to, I don't know enough about, I'd want to hear from either Cindy or Bob to, if they have any opinions.
Franco and then Zepari.
How many people do you, do you keep statistics to see how many people you're serving?
Yes.
And how many Groton residents do you serve?
I can't give you a total figure on that, I can tell you that on a monthly basis, each social worker deals with approximately 60 to 70 individuals. The counselors, on a monthly basis, work with approximate, well, the full-time counselor works with, the two full-time counselors, one in youth and family has probably, on an average basis, 15 to 17 clients on, on a monthly basis, providing short-term counseling for those individuals. The family support counselor probably deals with 17 to 20 families on a monthly basis, providing parenting support and guidance to those families. So I, as far as, we provide information and referral services, which are, those contacts are probably in the hundreds every month. Those are calls that come in of, of people that are looking for, say, housing, or an area shelter, et cetera, and we, excuse me, provide service in a, in a referral form to them.
Counselors Kirk?
I, I spent a couple of hours with you a couple of weeks ago, and I would recommend that you treat my fellow counselors the same way and get them in for a little educational program about what you're doing. I am very much impressed that you are reaching people who need to be reached, you're providing a, a kind of support to people. It is a, it's a split in me because personally, I believe that you're doing God's work, and I said that to you at that time. We on the council, on the other hand, are Caesar. And we are, we are extracting tax money not for charitable purposes. But that being said, I support you wholeheartedly, and I think the rest of the council would also if they spent the time with you that I had and met your staff and heard about the work that you're doing. I think that we should support, continue to support you and keep your department operating as it has been. Thank you.
The, the level of volunteerism that you are able to induce from this community is amazing, just for the Thanksgiving and for Christmas programs. And if you go down and you take a look in the Food Locker, the volunteers there are amazing, they have everything organized and signage, and it's all, it's all done with the volunteers. So you do a great job with what you are given and with eliciting that from the community. So I agree, you are doing a great job. Anyone else have comments or questions?
I just?
Counselor Parker?
Thank you. That's all. Because I know how much it's helped the community, and Counselor Zepari said it best, that yes, you're out there helping, and it's important to keep at level service. And I agree with him wholeheartedly. Stop by, I've volunteered with the group several times, and it's rewarding and it's helpful.
Counselor Schmidt?
I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you've done. I think that many of our citizens that do come to you are at a point in their lives when it is a crisis, they have fallen, they, they're in danger of falling through the cracks, and they have nowhere else to turn. And I think that compassionate people care about their fellow citizens, and I think you're doing a magnificent job. Thank you.
If there are no other comments or questions, we'll have a vote on account, on account 1051, and the number on the floor is six hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so move unanimously. We are on to page 144 for account 7320, Human Services Assistance Fund. Undertain a motion for account 7320.
I'll make the motion. For $10,000 even for our account number 7320.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Zepari. Did you want to address this, please?
This is an account that originally had the Spicer Fund in it as well as the Perkins Fund, and as is explained in the narrative, the Spicer Fund was exhausted after a very good run from 1979 to 19, to 2018. And we are now using the Perkins Fund as carefully as we can to stretch that money as far as we can. And the, I did, there was an email that forwarded some questions about the, the Perkins Fund, which I, I won't go into detail, but certainly if anyone has any questions, I don't know if everyone saw the response to that.
I believe it was forwarded to all the counselors.
Okay, okay. But I'd, I'd be happy to answer any, answer any questions that you have about that fund.
I was just curious, what the, what are the rentals? There's $7,000 for rentals? On page 146, I'm sorry.
That is, well, helping people that, that need assistance with rent, clients that need assistance with rent. We used to use Spicer a lot to help with rents, and when that went by the by, then we switched to Perkins. I, I did make a note, I believe, in the email that, where I responded to the questions, that we have been using Perkins in keeping with the bequest, which was to help with the welfare of children in our community. And so we've used Perkins to help with rental payments to families that have children. And at some point earlier this year, I realized that we were, because we didn't have Spicer anymore, that we were beginning to overutilize the Perkins Fund for that. And so I decided to hold off on that because I didn't want to extend beyond what the appropriation was for Perkins. Fortunately, I am pleased to say, thanks to those generous contributions that I mentioned earlier from the community, our discretionary fund has about $70,000 in it, and we are using that to help with rents now. But regardless of what pot of money we happen to be using for rents, we limit it across the board to one assistance payment per family, per household that applies on an annual basis, because that's the only way that we can stretch the funds we have. And amazingly, people are able to, to work with that. The clients that we assist understand that and do their level best to get themselves back on track again, too, so that, because our, our ultimate aim is, is to restore self-sufficiency to people and not have them be dependent on, on the resources we have.
Counselor Aubrey?
I was just wondering, do you work in conjunction at all with Always Home?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
Okay.
The counselor comes to our office, Marlin, comes to our office, Marlin Banker, who's a social worker with Always Home, which used to be MASH. And she's in our office, in fact, she thinks of herself as one of us, actually, I mean, she's, she's there quite frequently interviewing potential clients for, for the Always Home Shelter.
Great. Glad to hear that.
Yeah.
Counselor Heath?
The ask is for $10,000 to be distributed from the funds, not from the general fund, but from the, for Perkins Trust.
Right.
Okay, 7,000 being rental and 3,000 being postage print advertisement? What are we, what, what's the 3,000?
Well, that, as I explained in the email, that would normally, that has been set aside right from the very first years that we had this bequest. We decided we would apply part of it towards the Child Abuse Prevention Initiative that we do in the department. Fortunately, we also have a generous donation from the Groton Education Association, and also the State Department of Ed provides a program enhancement grant that we can use for the Child Abuse Prevention Initiative. So we may very well not need to even touch that $3,000 that's set aside, but I always ask that it be set aside just in case we don't get the, the donations or the grants that we hope to use for that particular initiative.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll vote on account 7320, an amount of $10,000. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so move unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks.
And we are on to Groton Public Library on page 148, account 1063. Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning.
So is there a motion for account 1063, Groton Public Library?
I would love the figure, if you'd like.
Yes, please.
One million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, am I on the right one?
Yep.
Six forty-six.
Moved by Aubrey, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Zepari. So one million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars. Hello?
Hi, thank you. I think most of you know me, but I'm Betty M. Reiter, the Director of Library Services, and I have with me my two managers. Cindy Wright is the manager of Technical and Circulation Services, and Jen Millie is the manager of Public Services. And I also want to thank many of my board members who joined us today to provide some support. So, can I give a little background?
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, thank you, first of all, for letting me have this opportunity to talk to you. As, as all of you know, we were asked once again to submit a level service budget. This was rather difficult for the library this year because state funding for our Kinetic Card, or now called Borrowwit CT account, is still uncertain, and we had to shift expenses that had previously been covered by that fund to our regular budget. We really closely examined every account, and the budget that we submitted, even though we moved those things over, was about $3,000 less than the FY 2018 budget. We accomplished that even though we had to shift a part-time salary and about $9,000 in software maintenance fees from the Borrowwit CT account to the regular library budget. So that was my recommended budget. The town manager's budget recommends an additional $44,193 cut achieved by eliminating a vacant library assistant one position. This will impact services to the public, and it continues a long line of eliminated library positions, including the FY 2016 loss of a 20-hour a week library assistant one, that was also due to budgetary constraints. FY 2009 was the first budget I worked on as library director. The proposed budget for this year is $250,000 lower, quarter of a million dollars we've lost in those 10 years. We've looked for every saving, we've made every personnel recommendation possible, we've outsourced tasks when it was beneficial, we seek grants and partnerships to maintain quality library services, we've maintained our hours, we've expanded our services to daycare centers, Groton schools, moderate low-income neighborhoods, special needs populations, and assisted living and nursing homes. We became a passport acceptance agency to provide a convenient service for our residents, which brings in some fees for the general fund. Groton is fortunate to have a creative and committed library staff who explore grants to bring coding to teens, they create amazing children's crafts out of paper plates and old library books. We seek out program presenters who donate their time, and we cheerfully welcome the over 200,000 visitors who walk through the doors every year. I'm out of ideas that will allow us to stretch our funding any further, but I'm happy to answer your questions, and, and I invite you all to come to the library and see what happens there every day.
Counselors Zepari?
I, you mentioned that you shifted funds from your regular budget into the Borrowwit program.
No, the other way around.
You shifted funds from Borrowwit because I noticed that Borrowwit is a separate entry on our budget to be considered actually next, I believe. The Borrowwit, the state no longer funds Borrowwit, and we are funding it out of the city budget, is that right?
No, that's not correct. The Borrowwit CT money that is there is, will always, if that, that will cease to exist once the state money dries up. The money that is in there is, is still the state money that is paid to us for providing services for out-of-town residents.
I noticed that there was, the Connecticut Grant was zero in 2018 and 2019.
We had to put in zero because it is uncertain in the state budget whether it will be funded or not, it is still uncertain. We did receive some information that this year's funding would come to us, but we haven't received it yet.
Okay, so it's indicated that it's, we're not getting it, but you anticipate we will get some.
Yeah, but when we were creating the budget, it was totally unclear whether there was any funding going to be available, so we had to put in zero because we couldn't, you know, we didn't want to estimate something that was...
I suppose it would be better for me to ask my questions when we deal with Borrowwit, but I'm wondering, how many people use Borrowwit?
Well, I mean, that's a, a difficult question, because Borrowwit is not, is not used by Groton residents... It's used by out-of-town residents.
Okay.
So, it's, we receive a very small amount of money, you know, per transaction for someone who's from out of town, who comes to Groton and borrows materials from the Groton Library. But over the course of the year, you know, that adds up to a considerable amount of money. It's usually, at this point, around $20,000 a year that we've been getting from the state to help pay for that service.
And you do have statistics indicating how much you're spending on that particular function?
No, we receive this funding from the state based on their formula for transactions.
And so we don't know how many, how many out-of-town residents?
Oh, yes, we do, oh, yes. We report that number to the state, we know how many that is, yes.
Well, how many is it?
I did not bring that with me, too.
It's over $10,000 a year.
And do you know how many Groton residents go to other libraries to borrow materials?
We can find, I mean, that's all in the state report, yes.
No, I've done that.
We can look at it, yes.
I wanted a book that you didn't have, and you got it for me.
Yes.
Counselors of Perry, are there any other questions on 1063?
You trying to get me back on track? I, no, I don't. I think that the library serves an important function. I thank you for your work. And I think we should support you. I think the motion is made is a good motion. We should follow the manager's recommendation.
I have, I have two questions. And one is the same question I just asked Dr. Fondulis. What does your financial assistant do?
And of course, it's very similar, you know, helps us with anything that has to do with finances. And in the library, because we are buying so many books and other types of materials, our bills are fairly complicated. Our bill to Baker &amp; Taylor, which is the company that provides most of our books, ranges from, you know, $5,000 to $10,000 a month. And the bill can be that thick. And so she is, spends a lot of time every month going through those Baker &amp; Taylor bills and making sure everything is accounted for. Plus, we, you know, we have grants. We do, we do a lot of, we do a lot of invoices over the course of a month.
And then the other question has to do with the fact that we are a passport acceptance facility. What does that cost the town? Is that just taken as a portion of someone's salary that does other things as well? Why did we decide to begin offering that service there when I believe Town Hall knows Town Hall?
The town clerk at one time did it. And I think it was, they're not allowed to do it anymore because there was some, I don't know, misuse of the service by some town clerks because they were also the agency that does birth certificates. It led to some illegal, basically, you know, issuance of passports.
You're not implying that it happened in our town clerk's office?
Not here, not here. But I mean, somewhere in the, elsewhere in the country, that was happening. And so they took away that ability for town clerks to offer passports.
Okay.
And so we did, we now, it is regular staff. We provide certain times of the day when people can make appointments. And we receive $35 for each passport application that we process.
Did you want to address this?
I was just going to mention the same thing. Where I came from, the county clerk used to do it, and they passed a rule that you couldn't do it. So, at one point, I was a passport agent just filling in for about a year. I was one of the few people.
Glad that's your responsibility.
I did a little of everything.
Counselor Franco?
There is overtime pay here.
Yes.
What does that cover?
It mostly, it covers, you know, a few times when library staff ends up staying past the time. Some occasionally will have children who are left behind at 9:00 when we close. And we can't just leave them there until someone comes to get them. But mostly, it is our AV person who stays late for meetings and does overtime because meetings run over, these kinds of meetings, council meetings, RPM meetings.
It's our fault. Counselors of Perry and then Heath?
I was just going to point out that passport services are also afforded at the post office in Groton. And it's just a duplication to have them at the library.
Where would you like to go, Paul? Library or the post office?
Well, to be perfectly honest, the last time I got my passport renewed was about...
I shouldn't have asked.
Five or six weeks ago. And I went to the post office and I was treated very well.
Counselor Heath?
The library is always full of people, you know, going in and out. And I appreciate what you do. My question is, you're closed on Sunday now, is that right?
That's not correct. We're open from September through April on Sundays. So, very soon we will be closing on Sunday. But September to April, we are open on Sunday from 1:00 to 5:00.
So, then you're open seven days a week?
Yes.
Is there any savings or potential to close maybe a Monday or Sunday or something along those lines?
Well, I answered this in an email I had yesterday. First of all, you have to consider union contracts. Our union people are going to be paid, you know, for five days a week, whatever days they work. The savings really for that would be fairly minor because it is our part-time people who are hourly who fill in for us. You know, we have a lot of people who come in and work four hours a day shelving books or things like that. So, those are fairly low-paying positions. They're the ones that would mainly be affected by closing a day, other than the people who need to use the library. And, you know, the community rooms are booked with outside groups using our rooms. So, it would have an effect on the community, I think, closing a day.
Just to make a call?
Just to mention, we had looked at that Sunday hours. I think it was only about $14,000.
It's very...
It's $14,000 to keep those Sunday hours. It didn't appear to me that the loss was worth, you know, a small gain in money.
Counselor Otter?
I noticed that it says the staff added about $10,000 books and some other publications. Do you get any books given to you by donors? I mean, I go sometimes and there'll be like three copies of a book. And I'm assuming you're not buying three copies, but...
Well, I mean, sometimes we do buy extra copies because it's a book that's very popular. And people would have to wait six months to get the latest book. But we do get donations and we go through them carefully. But, you know, like most things, people aren't donating last week's bestseller. They're donating something that's, you know, 10 years old. And we look through it and we add what we can. But those are most often used for book sales and other projects.
I guess I would encourage the citizens, if they get a new book and they're not planning on reading it a second time, that they should donate it to the library.
Oh, yeah, and we do use them, yeah.
Are there any other questions? Counselor Heath?
For financing, you had mentioned, or I think you mentioned, unless I'm mistaken, that you apply for grants. But I don't see grants listed under the financing, unless it's under miscellaneous.
And I believe that's because, you know, the grants are usually for special projects. They're not usually to support regular library daily functions. For example, I just put one in yesterday that you'll be hearing about soon, to replace the furniture in our children's activity room, which is over 20 years old and is no longer really functional for how we use that space. So, you know, and that's about a $6,000 grant for the furniture that we would need. So, we tend to look for that sort of thing that never gets put into the budget. You know, there's never money for furniture and equipment in the budget. So, we tend to look for the kind of nice-to-have, add-on types of projects.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Parker?
Thank you, guys. I know that library is used every day where it counts. It's not only used by Groton residents, it's also used by college students and different community groups who go there many times. So, anything that we can do to support our community and help out with the kids' homework, because I know a lot of you are, like you said, out in the community, making sure that children are being led to reading and to help with the school system and moving them along. So, anything I can do.
That's what I wanted to mention as well. The work that they do in conjunction with the schools as far as summer reading. And if you go in there, as it gets closer to the end of the school year and over the summer, they have everything organized by, they pull the books that the teachers are requiring for the kids. And they have it set up very nicely. And they have lists for, you know, the kids in case they forgot it, you know. Who would forget a reading list? But they're fully prepared to work with the schools. I know they have done, at my school, our English teachers have brought some of our students over there. And they've done little lessons about how to use the library. Believe it or not, probably all of us use the library on a regular basis, but not all kids do. So, their outreach is great into the community.
Counselor Morosik?
Yeah, account 5261, the software maintenance. You're going up about $8,000.
That's money that previously had been paid for in our Borrowwit CT budget, which we now had to move to the regular account. So, it's not anything new. It's just a shift of where we're paying for it.
Counselor Franco and then Heath?
I'm new to the budgeting process. But I do notice on page 150, it's line 5109, the salary adjustments. So, it's approximately between, the estimated was $20,000 and then the adjusted was $18,000. And then also, the regular and adjusted, $2018, had gone up by $50,000. Can you tell me what those two lines?
Those were union negotiated salary raises. And in that particular year, it was a retroactive pay. So, it actually went back, kind of, it was actually a two-year raise. It was covered in that one year. So, that was, you know, that's all it is.
Anything else, Counselor Franco?
No, thank you.
Counselor Heath? And then Aubrey?
So, regarding Counselor Morosik's question, the 5261 software maintenance fee in Kinetic, I wrote my note under the wrong heading. It's down $5,200, $5,725. Put in the library budget, it's up $8,958. So, there's a difference.
Yes. And as I explained, the, most of the difference, I mean, each thing went up a very little bit. You know, some of the contracts went up $100, one went up $40. But the main difference between the two things is that we have two contracts that are three-year maintenance contracts. And this happens to be the year that we have to pay those three-year contracts. And so, you know, it's kind of a once every three years it's going to appear on the budget. And that was about $2,100, those two contracts.
Counselor Aubrey?
I just want to say, I think you're extremely dedicated. And I thank you for all you do. I wish things were different and we could do things differently. But I think we're going to grow in Groton. And as we do, I think we'll be able to do more. And I hope you'll always be there. Thank you, hope for what you do.
If there are no further questions, we'll take a vote on account 1063. And the amount on the floor is $1,663,646. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so move unanimously. So, we are on to page 152. And this is the Borrow, is it Borrow IT or Borrow It?
Borrow It.
Borrow It, Connecticut, account number 3310. Is there a motion for account 3310?
Make a motion for 3310 in the amount of $18,300.
Moved by Franco, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Parker. Counselors of Perry, do you have any questions?
No.
The funding really will only cover our ILS, our Integrated Library System. This is the system that runs the whole library. It's the way we check out books, is we maintain all the records of the materials we have. It maintains our patron records. We share it with Waterford, Mystic, and Noank in the Bill Library. And, you know, this is our portion of that, of that contract.
Counselor Heath?
Doesn't sound to me like this is possible, but there's no way to zero this one out.
I mean, the library would be gone. We cannot go with that. And plus, it's not our money. This is state money that's sitting in an account that is just, has to be spent on library services.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we will vote on account 3310 in the amount of $18,300. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, abstaining, so move unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, we are going to page 179 now for outside agencies. We're going to actually take a five-minute recess. So, if everybody could be back at 10:35, please? Thank you. Okay, we are back from our recess. And we are on to account 1054, Health and Service Agencies. This is on page 179 in your book. But there is, in the appendix, beginning on page 11, the individual requests from the agencies. So, we can be referring back and forth to those as needed. So, is there a motion for account 1054 from any of the councilors?
Can I make a motion?
Wait, oh, I'm sorry.
We usually do it, Cindy was telling me we do it.
You want to do it individually?
Item, item, like Ledgeline.
Except for the service agencies, it's usually moved in one number.
But the other individual are individual.
By each house.
Okay, so I take that back. So, then we are moving 10540, Ledgeline Health. Counselor Heath?
Make a motion for $289,354.
Moved by Heath, seconded by Parker. So, for discussion of Ledgeline Health District, we have a gentleman here. And this is on page 11 in the appendix, if you have questions. Hello?
Hi there, how are you?
Are you Mr. Mansfield? Thank you for coming out.
Thanks for having me.
Is there anything you'd like to say to us before we discuss or vote?
Sure, just briefly. Ledgeline Health District continues to provide public health services to the town of Groton. In December, the Ledgeline Board of Directors voted to approve my proposed per capita rate of $7.37. This rate is unchanged from last year's rate. And the primary reason for this flat budget are the efficiencies gained through the addition of four additional municipalities in the last 18 months, our continued success in obtaining grant funds from external sources. I should note, the state contribution to local public health has been reduced 5% each year in the past three years. And we expect that to be true in FY 19 as well. I've worked with our Board of Directors to keep the per capita rate as low as possible. The per capita rate that's proposed this year is actually lower than it was 10 years ago. So, we have a pretty good financial track record. And on behalf of our Board and our Board of Directors and our staff, we thank you for continuing to support the district. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counselor Schmidt?
I just wondered if there is a comprehensive report given to the town manager each year on the different establishments that you've visited? How many visits have been made and what the results were?
Yes, with the budget packet that I forward to the town manager was a comprehensive report of all of our activities. Not specifically how many inspections we did. We can provide that information at any time. But did everyone get the packet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. But sure, we're happy to get that information, a breakdown of number of establishments. Off the top of my head, we have a little over, just about 1,100 food service establishments district-wide. I don't have all the numbers off the top of my head, but we do have those, if you'd like.
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Counselors of Perry?
You're also expecting hotels?
Correct.
Any other health-related facilities that you inspect besides hotels?
Sure, just to back up a little bit, we have a number of divisions within Ledgeline Health District. We have an environmental division that's staffed by about nine people. It varies a little bit because we're growing pretty rapidly. But the Environmental Health Division is responsible for licensing and inspecting all food service establishments, cosmetology establishments, daycare, and public pools, and any other general complaints we receive from the public. Land use is one of the biggest things that our Environmental Health Division does. Subsurface sewage disposal systems, public wells and so forth, and private wells. We also have a full-time epidemiologist on staff and public health nurse. So, we monitor the health status of our communities and then decide which issues are most pressing. And then we look for grant funds to support those particular programs. We have a robust finance and administration department with a number of grant writers. We have one individual whose sole job it is is to manage our grants. More than 30% of our operating budget is funded by external sources, contracts with state government, federal government, private foundations. So, there's a wide breadth of things that we do at Ledgeline Health District. So there's a, a wide breadth of, of things that we do at Ledgely Light Health District.
Councilor Oprah.
If I understand it correctly, you have the, your department has all the information for all the septic in the area?
Correct. Subsurface sewage disposal systems, when they're installed, the installer is required to submit an ASBIL drawing, and we maintain, maintain those electronically, district-wide.
And do you have asked information as well?
Yeah, anything that's out there, that's been created historically, is in our possession.
I don't think most people know that, so I just wanted to mention it.
I know you ask for ASBILs every once in a while, so you know that.
I just want to say that this is one of the successful regional initiatives that we have in Connecticut, the health districts, and I'm, I'm glad it's working out well. Any questions?
If I could just comment on that, our, my Board of Directors has been very supportive of, of me reaching out to adjacent communities that have part-time health departments and encouraging them to join the district, not only for the public health benefit, but for the financial benefit. So when North Stonington, Town of Stonington, Borough of Stonington, Old Lime, they joined, all joined within the past 18 months, there was significant financial savings, not only for the municipalities, but it was good for our budget as well, and that, that's what allowed me to present a 0% increase budget to, to my board.
Are there any other questions on 10540? Seeing none, we will vote on $289,354. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we have two items for VNA. The first is 10541, VNA School Health. I'll take a motion for 10541.
I make the motion to move for 10541, $1,081,278.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Morawski. And this is on, let's see, what page it's on in our notes? It's right after Ledgely Light. 21? 21, thank you, Councilor Parker. Hello, we have someone from VNA, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, could you introduce yourself, please?
My name is Leah Hendricks, I'm here representing Mary Lindsay, she couldn't be here today. I'm the supervisor of the School Health and Community Wellness Nurses.
Councilor Franco?
Hi, I, um, I'm looking over the information listed here that you had given, and I have, I have numerous questions. I don't see, in the back, there's no, there's no listing of how many school nurses were actually, we have on staff.
We have 10 schools that we cover in the Groton District, and each one has a school nurse. We also provide school health aides for, um, some schools are full-time, some are part-time basis, depending on the needs. Sacred Heart School does not have a health aide. We do provide services for that school because of the law that states that for private, non, you know, parochial schools, they're entitled to same health services, so, but they don't have a health aide.
So how many health aides are employed?
Um, we have, one, two, three. We have nine health aides at this time, not all are full-time, there's, Butler School is smaller, they have a part-time aide, most of the others are about a three-quarter aide at Claude Chester, the rest are full-time.
So there are 10?
Six hours a day, I'm sorry.
Okay, so there's 10 RNs and nine health aides.
Plus a half-time float nurse.
A half-time what?
A part-time, half-time float nurse that is shared with New London Public Schools, and she is the nurse that assists with screenings, any type of absences, that we may need a nurse on the spur of the moment, somebody has to leave quickly, she's moved over to fill in to maintain the safe staffing in all the schools.
Are there requirements of, that we have to have health aides if we have RNs in the school?
Well, Connecticut State law is, hasn't been changed since 1982, and at that time, the, the law was written that there would be one nurse per district, so that's one registered nurse for 10 schools. That's virtually impossible today because of the treatments that children are coming in with, diabetics that have, I'm just using this as an example, diabetics that have treatments that only a nurse can perform. We have medically fragile children, we have G-tubes, feedings through the stomach that we do, it's not possible. We also have found that, and there is, there's much written about this evidence-based, that having a nurse in the school helps to decrease absenteeism, whereas if you have a teacher, a child comes in and they're sick, and the teacher has to determine if they're, you know, what they need, they'll send the child home, whereas the nurse is able to more make an accurate assessment, perhaps give them a medication. Teachers can give medications, but they can't make an assessment as to, well, do they need it or don't they need it? They have to have very specific guidelines before they can give a medication. So it does help to maintain the attendance and also the safety of the student.
When it comes to the community health and wellness, um, I see that we're doing flu shots, and then the BP is blood pressure and wellness clinics, is that what that is? The BP?
The, I'm sorry, say that again?
It says BP and wellness clinics?
Yeah, BP is blood pressure, yes.
And then, um, indigent care and wellness visits?
Yes, we, um, we actually look at that quite frequently, and as you'll, as you may see in the synopsis, we are reducing one of our clinics this year because we found that the attendance was down. So what we do is we will go to various sites, Groton Senior Center, Picornic Village, Avery Heights, and we will be there on a regular basis, monthly usually, and we will take blood pressures, answer medically-oriented questions of the residents to help maintain their health and wellbeing.
Do you have anything else?
I think I'm all set right now.
Councilor Morawski?
Yeah, I've got a question. Originally, I think you came under the Board of Education for the school nurses, but we took it, they, they took it out historically because that was always cut, those programs. The nurses that are assisting the, the school system now, do they travel with the children?
The, um...
Your nurses?
We, as far as I know, the, in Groton, they were not under the, the Board of Ed. I've been the supervisor for 12 years, and Mary has been part of the VNA a lot longer than, than I have. We've been contracted service, I wish I knew when it started, but I don't. So, the nurses don't also go and travel to home visits, they are stationed in the school. There was a time, though, that the nurses used to do both home visits and in the school, they were in the school part-time, but because of the medical complexity of all the children, we have found over the years, and I cover other districts as well, Gro, um, New London, Waterford, East Lime, the nurses are stationary in the schools now.
Now, how about when the children go on, or the students go on trips, school trips? Do you travel?
Occasionally, we will be asked to staff field trips, but it depends on if there is a student on that trip that has a need that can only be maintained by, or managed by a nurse. For instance, I'll go back to the diabetic again, you know, teachers can do a lot, more so than they have years ago. However, only the nurse is able to maybe check their blood sugar by a finger stick or provide insulin, give that type of medication. So, we will be asked on occasion to go, but that is a separate line item, I believe, under the Board of Ed, I really don't...
Yeah, it is, and I was wondering how your nurses interface with their nurses on trips?
Usually, it's our nurses that go on, on the trips, the, the Board asks, the Board of Ed will give us a yes or no if they will approve nursing for a field trip. We work very closely with the Board of Ed Administration. We meet whenever the needs of the children change in the school, such as when Pleasant Valley closed, we, I met personally with Dr. Grenier and Denise Stulittle, and we saw where we could reduce, you know, other hours, maybe we had an increase because of the influx of children coming from Pleasant Valley, and we work very closely, it's, you know, to maintain the safety, but also be fiscally conservative.
Yeah, my concern is, are we talking about the same nurses? Or do they have special, they have their own nurses?
No.
They don't have their own nurses?
We are the nurses.
You are the nurses, so the Board of Education doesn't have those nurses?
Correct.
But yet, we have a line item for them in the Board of Education.
I'm not, I'm not really able to answer any questions as far as...
I, I'm just wondering if we're double-dipping.
I'm sorry?
Not you, the Board of Education.
Councilor Oprah.
Just an ice cream. Are you going to be working at all, do you know, with the new program on truancy?
With truancy? Not, not per se, no. I mean, my nurses do try to improve attendance, you know, by keeping the children well, but we are not involved with the school's absenteeism committees at this time.
Okay, and are your, your nurses RNs or LPNs, or?
They're all RNs.
Is that a requirement?
Um, you, RNs are needed for many of the tasks that are done, they are the only nurses who can make a care plan, we develop a care plan for that child, making the true assessment. The LPNs are more task-oriented, they follow the direction of the nurse, they have to be under the supervision of a nurse. So, we only employ registered nurses at this time. So if you had an LPN in the school, you would still need an RN over her. And it couldn't be me sitting at the office, because I have to be able to get there, and it has to be a nurse on, pretty much on site.
And that's a requirement?
It is a requirement. There are clinical, there are guidelines written on the State Department of Education website under, for the school nurses. If you put in the search engine, health promotion...
I'm sorry?
In, in a search engine?
Yeah.
You put in health promotion, Connecticut Department of Education, there are documents and all the requirements for school nursing on that site.
I had a question regarding, what Councilor Franco had started to ask you.
Sure.
Regarding the presence of the RNs in the buildings, as well as the health aides.
Yes.
What is the relationship between them? Does it, does every school have an RN and also have a health aide?
In Groton, they do, except for Sacred Heart, which has very low, you know, a lower population. And so the health aide, they also take care of the children when they come in with minor first aid and injuries. They perform data entry. Whenever a child comes into the school, they come in with health requirements, they have to have a physical at certain points throughout the year, various grades, they have to have certain immunizations, all this needs to be entered into a computer system. They help maintain the charts, they do the filing. We have a lot of student, students in the school, as you close schools, we get more students in other schools. Most of the schools have 300, 400 kids in them. You'll have some schools with multiple diabetics, you know, the nurses are busy taking care of the children with the complex medical needs, and the health aides are able, they're able to help with the more minor illnesses and injuries that occur through, quite regularly throughout the day.
So the RN is there, anytime there are students on the premises, the RN has to be there, I assume?
Correct, she is there.
Okay, and then the health aide, are they LPNs, or are they?
No, they're, they're not.
What's the requirement?
They're unskilled, as far, their requirement to be a school health aide is CPR, first aid, high school diploma, and a comfort level with taking care of children. And good data entry skills, accuracy.
So the data entry could not be done by the school nurse, then, by the RN?
There is no time. There's truly no time for that. It's a lot of children in the schools, and you get to a school like Fitch High School, it's the largest school down on the coastline, over 1,000 students, and she wouldn't be able, there's not enough time in the day. The law has written one nurse actually per 750 students, that's a, that's not really the law, I shouldn't say that, that's more of the suggested best practice. And we, we go over that in many, many places, because you have to also consider the complexity of the students, that, that's 100, that's one nurse to 100, to 750 well students. We have no schools with all well students anymore.
Councilor Schmidt.
Well, we have nine schools, but we have 10 and a half nurses. I wonder, where does the extra one and a half nurse go?
We have, the, Sacred Heart has one nurse.
And does the town pay for them?
I'm sorry?
The Town of Groton has to pay for them?
Yes, that is, Sacred Heart is a private nonprofit school, in Connecticut, the law is written that they are entitled to same health services as the public school in which that school is situated. So, for instance, Sacred Heart is entitled to nursing services through the Town of Groton, just like Williams in New London, or St. Joseph's in New London receives services from the New London Public School District. And then the other half nurse is the float nurse that previously was a full-time float nurse in the Town of Gro, in Groton Public Schools, but we found that it wasn't needed for, she wasn't needed full-time, and that is a good example of where the district and I were, we did work together to reduce that, and they share her with New London. Because Groton and New London, you know, there are, there's, are a lot of needs, a lot of needy children in, and then we have the military schools where there are, that's another complex set of issues, you know, where, you know, one parent is generally not there, it, you know, involves a lot of unrest, a lot of movement, that's a lot of, you know, children in and out, there's a lot of clerical work to be done with students coming and going, a lot of requirements for, you know, making sure that all the records are handled properly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the legal requirements are for the RNs in each school, there is no legal requirement for health aides, correct?
There is no legal requirement for health aides. The legal requirement in the state of Connecticut for an RN is one nurse per school district. It's an antiquated law that we've been trying to change.
Agreed. If, because the health aides are doing data entry in minor first aid, is that something where if that were reduced, would that be a great impact? So could you split a health aide between two elementary schools?
It would be...
Keep one, keep a health aide full-time at Fitch, and then maybe two elementary schools, each would have an RN, and then would have one health aide that could split the time between two schools and go and do data entry one or two days a week at each school?
We did that in the past, that, we did have it between, I believe it was Butler, Claude Chester, but with the closing of Pleasant Valley and various schools over the years, and the schools have become larger, it hasn't, it wasn't feasible anymore, and we had to resume full, you know, aides in each school. It, it didn't work with the increased complexity and the increased population. We do still have only a four-hour-a-day health aide at Butler, because we just found that that was sufficient. The others, because, as I said, the military population, the diabetics, the asthma, the, what we're seeing in the school, it's not safe to just have a nurse there by herself. She can't be taking care of a diabetic who may be having a blood sugar dropping down, which could happen at any time, and then, you know, have all these children come in. So she, the aide does so much more than data entry, I mean, she is actually hands-on, she's doing the first aid, she's doing the, taking care of the head injuries, we see head injuries, and, you know, there is a big push in the state of Connecticut, well, I believe it's all states, to manage concussions. to manage concussions. So that is something else that the nurse, you know, needs to be greatly involved with. Yes?
Counselor Parker?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
As a parent who has had children who have either been hurt or have medical conditions in the schools, if that nurse isn't available, at least the health aide is available to help, to at least make phone calls. For instance, one of them had to have the EpiPen. If another child came in, as you're saying, with a diabetes, a diabetic attack, you have one person to handle two medical emergencies. There's no way someone, my fear would be, if we take that out and there's a medical emergency with two people at the same time, and it has happened, I've been in the office where they've called me, and to be there to go get her, there's something hap, can happen without a second person there. For me, it's personally, it's safety and numbers and the medical concerns. Because there are a lot of kids who have not only diabetes, there's medical food allergies within the school, there's asthma, there's different medical plans. And we're asking one person to take care of two to three hundred kids in that school. Not, who could be a mixture of, not, I don't want to say unhealthy, who are medically challenged within the school district to take care of our kids. And I don't think taking that person out would be safe.
Counselor Franco, and then Counselor Schmidt.
So some of the health aides are part-time, they're only there for four hours. So there are times that there's only one nurse.
Correct, the one at Butler is part-time.
So there is only one nurse at some schools at, at a time?
Yeah, it's a, the population at that school is such that we're able to maintain safety with a part-time aide. It, you know, I would talk with, if I saw that Butler suddenly had a couple diabetics come in, or, you know, some more severe situations, I'd be in touch with the Board of Ed, and we would look at perhaps redistributing staff. We look at it, it's a constant, you know, it's not something we just look at once a year. But right now, four hours is sufficient.
Counselor Schmidt?
I just wondered about the health aide who's doing all of the reporting. And is it because she has to make a report on each child in the school, regardless of whether they come into the nurse's office? Or does she have to get their background for health issues?
For.
I just wondered why there's so much paperwork involved.
Yes, okay, yes, every student that comes into the health room needs to, we need to chart on them. Because we have a saying in nursing that if it isn't charted, it isn't done. And so for liability purposes, we need to maintain a record of what we did to that child. So that is on top of caring for the children. Some of our schools, we could see fifty, sometimes we've gone up to seventy kids a day for two people. And especially Mary Morrison, that's a good example, extremely busy school.
Four hundred and sixty-seven students.
Yeah, with a lot of complex medical needs, diabetics, you know, G-tube feeds. You know, we wouldn't survive up there without the aides. So yes, when the student come in, we don't just take care of the student. You have to log them into a, the computer system. You have to sometime, you know, be on the phone with the parents. We run into difficulty reaching parents sometime, I'm sure, you know, phone number's out of service. You know, so you're making multiple calls, you're leaving messages. Sometimes we have to call the physicians, you know, and waiting for calls back. There's so much more than what is routinely thought of. So I thank you for that question, for letting me bring that up.
Thank you.
Counselor Franco?
Well, after reviewing this, I think the community health wellness offers a lot of duplications in our town. I believe that the flu clinics that we, Legulite offers them, other outside services that we have offer them. I know grocery stores and CVS have them, free flu clinics. They're, I mean, you can see them everywhere. I believe the blood, blood pressure and wellness clinics, I believe that's duplication of services as well. Indigenous care and wellness visits, I'm not sure if we need that. Avery Point?
Avery Heights.
Avery Heights?
That's, I, I, I'm, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, finish what you're saying.
You said that they go to Avery Heights to.
Avery Heights may be the one that's being taken out this year. Don't quote me on that.
Yeah, the two, Groton Senior Center, correct?
It's.
She's looking at the Indigenous Care and Wellness Visits.
Okay.
So some of those people could be wheelchair-bound and stuff, and cannot get out to places? So I'm just pointing there.
But there, there's CNAs and other services that are afforded usually through people's insurance.
Yeah, okay.
And also the health aides. I can understand maybe up at the high school, maybe needing health aides along with an RN. But some of the other schools, if we're at partial days doing an RN, or maybe at the beginning of the school year when we're doing a lot of paperwork and you have to get everybody's medical information. But I don't, I don't see why we need somebody there just to do data entry stuff and help with some minor things for a portion of the day, when you don't even know if an emergency's gonna come in at that time. But they're okay for the other part of the day with just an RN, when you don't know if an emergency's gonna come at that time either. So I'm making a motion that we cut the VNA's down with health aides and with the community health.
Would you like to move a new number, please, that we need a number for?
Well, I'm ha, well.
You need to do the math.
There's a math situation here, so I probably need Cindy to help me. But if there's health aides, and we're gonna have some in the high school, maybe just say one or two health aides in the school, I don't know, because she, she's doing this by hours. That's how the paperwork that I have here is, by hours. So I don't know what the hours would have been.
Director Landry?
I just wanted to make sure that we're just. Now going with the health aide, the cost center one. I don't want to mix the cost center one and cost center two, because that would be a separate vote.
So we're gonna do the, the.
Right now, it would just be the school health.
School health is what we're talking about. And that would be if you were looking to make an adjustment to the one million dollar figure.
So that would be the top half of page twenty-one is the account we're working on now. Whereas the community health and wellness goes with one oh five four two, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. May I say something?
Excuse me one second, did you wish to move another number?
I'd like to move the number there, but I don't know, I need Cindy's help, I guess. And I might need to know how many hours.
Well, while you're working on it, there are a couple other people that wanted to talk. So you could work up a number, and Counselor Morosik.
Yeah, I've got a question. Autism, Asperger's, do we handle those cases? Because those are the children that are gonna be bullied. And those are the ones that wind up in having problems later on. And as we know, in the past history of this country, we had some of those children.
Correct, we do care for.
Do terrible things.
Yes, we see.
So you're the front line for this type of thing. That recognizes this type of child that might be bullied by the others.
Of course.
And that's what causes some of these problems. Are we aware of this situation?
Correct, we see a lot of children in the health room with autism. It's a safe place for them, sometimes, very calm, a calmer environment. So we take care of all the children.
How about Asperger's?
We would see that, but predominantly, we see mostly children with them. But if there were children there with Asperger's, we'd take care of them as well. We take care of everyone.
Three of the schools were Asperger's children.
Yeah, so they're, you know, they would be our children, they're our children.
I'm sorry, who, okay, Counselor Franco?
Does some, but in the school system, they have therapists that go with them as well, don't they? They have people that are assigned to them throughout the school day.
I don't know.
That help them.
I would assume that.
As well as the nurses in, in the nurses' office.
Yeah, I would assume that that would happen.
Autism spectrum is usually dealt with by special education, or school psychiatrists, counselors, that kind of thing.
We all work very closely together.
Is there anyone else with a question or comment? Counselor Schmidt?
Is the school day considered to be six hours?
For the health aides, that's a full-time day for the health aides. The high school's a little bit longer, I believe she's six and a quarter, or six and a half. But six hours for them. The school nurse is six point eight three hours in the elementary school. She comes in just a little bit, about fifteen minutes before school starts, to be there when the children arrive, and leaves about fifteen minutes. I believe it's fifteen, I don't know, we changed it, we reduced that recently, after the students leave.
I just thought it might help to determine the hours that you wanted to change.
Right, so if you had a full-time health aide, how many hours would they put in per year?
Per year?
Because that's what it's on here, you're told, you're charging us by the hours.
Mm-hmm.
And it says the hours and then the rate, but it doesn't actually say. I, I don't know how many hours they put in a year. So I can't come up with a number.
Well, it's a hundred, a hundred and eighty-one days in Groton, plus they have two days prep to help with the charts. So that's a hundred and eighty-four days times six hours a day.
One one zero four hours. And if we had two at the high school to assist, because there's so many children up there?
Counselor Heath?
Just wondering, I remember years ago in the early eighties, my grandmother worked at a facility that housed mentally challenged individuals, people with health issues, that kind of thing, don't know what that was. But very timely. So the federal government undid this whole system. Have we seen, I know this is like a fifty-year trend for you, but have we seen an increase over time in health issues in the schools, or, you know, around the town? Or, no, this is a general question, just to fill the void.
We've seen a lot more medical issues, social issues, behavioral issues that impact our care in the nurse's office. My children were in school in the, well, they were born in the eighties, went through the Groton school system, and it has changed, I can say, over the years. You know, the role of the nurse is much more vibrant, for lack of a better word. She's much more involved in, with the team approach to caring for all the, all these needs of the children. All I wanted to say before, when I asked if I could speak, was that should the health aides be reduced or eliminated in certain situations, I'm, I'm concerned about the safety of the children, just to maintain the safety. Because as we spoke about, one medical professional taking care of all those children is, it becomes a safety issue.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Counselors up there?
Do you have protocols for people, for children who come in with an asthma attack?
With a what?
Do you have protocols, or there is a system that there's? For instance, if they come in with an asthma attack, is there an inhaler that they use? How often are they checked? How long are they retained in the, in the nursing sta, nursing office? Do you have a protocol that outlines that? Or does each nurse generate her own plan of care for each individual patient?
We have many protocols, and I'm glad you brought that up. We have care plans for students, as asthma students. But we obtain our care plans, medical care plans are obtained from the physician or the APRNs. We can take orders from them. And so the nurse will provide care based on those care plans. But she is also able to use her nursing judgment as far as, you know, with some leeway on that. If a student is not responding, if a student has an inhaler and they're not responding properly to that inhaler. It may be written to, you know, call the physician at that point, but it may not be on the care plan, it may not be a concise care plan. And so the nurse has to use her judgment. And the, you know, asthma is so prevalent in the schools nowadays, and so, and I, I don't know if you know, but students, especially kids, they can just drop so fast. You know, they can become an emergency situation in a very short period of time. Now, most of them fortunately are not that severe. They're a little wheezing, they're gonna go to gym, they have to take their inhaler before they go to gym, and they're fine. But the nurse has to be aware of that, she can't put a guard down. Because.
Put a guard down.
She can't put a guard down and just say, oh, they're fine, they just get their inhaler every day. She's, has to constantly be on her game to watch these children, because they can crash and, on her at any time. Same thing with anaphylaxis, with the EpiPens. We have so many EpiPens and allergies, and student, kids becoming allergic just in the middle of the day to something they were never allergic to before. That, Connecticut has a law now that, you know, if the nurse isn't there, we can train teachers. We have to train somebody else, because there are so many allergies and so many people are coming down with allergies randomly, that it's a law now that somebody besides the nurse, you know, the principal or a teacher, has to be able to give that EpiPen at the spur of the moment.
Now, when you give it an EpiPen, do you transport the child to the hospital?
Yes, that's an automatic, that we would call nine one one. Because, you know, their heart rate's going up, their vital signs are.
How often do you call nine one one in the system?
Yeah, with nine, with EpiPens, or with any system.
In general, in general, how often would it, the, is it the?
Well, depends on the school. I, I really don't have, I would say generally, if we don't call nine one one once a year, it's a good year. So we're, we're happy about that.
So only once a year are you calling nine one one?
We have some schools that we've called three times already for various reasons. Now, maybe not necessarily in Groton, but in all, I'm thinking of all my schools.
Okay.
You know, it could happen at any school. When you get, if you have children fighting and somebody gets hurt, we may have to call an ambulance. Somebody could have a fracture on the playground or a head injury, and we, you know, we don't know.
You mentioned head injuries and protocols for head injuries. I hope you're not keeping head injuries in the school.
Head, the protocol for head injuries, it depends on the severity. There, there are definite protocols for that. Several years ago, when the state started the initiative on the concussion protocols, one of the representatives from the School Based Health Center and I got together, and we did compile a, a whole protocol for when to call the, the doctor, when to send the child out. Maybe just, you can send the child out with, you know, by, by the parent can drive them. And we worked in conjunction with Dr. Blayfeld, who is the medical director, to adopt these protocols. And they ended up being adopted by Waterford and Eastline. So we have very strict guidelines, because, you know, we don't want to let those kids go by. Most of them, anybody, you know, that gets a head bump will go home. I say most, because sometimes you get just a little bump, and the nurse has to assess that. But there are definite signs that we look for, and, before we make that determination.
I had one other question for you, is that the, the RN rate is sixty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents per hour?
Correct.
And of that sixty-seven eighty-seven, how much is actually paid to the nurse?
That varies on their tenure. And also if they are bachelorette nurses versus associate degree nurses. Bachelorettes have a slightly higher rate. The nurses are part of a bargaining unit, so that's where our rate is determined.
I'm just wondering, how much is retained for administrative costs in the VNA?
That I really don't know, that would be a Mary Lindsay any question, I'm afraid, that. But I do know that we, I've always been told that we're even. We, you know, with our, with our administrative costs and the services that we do provide to the towns.
Counselor Franco, and then Ober.
I know that when it comes to head injuries, we have an athletic trainer as well that we pay in the school budget, because I believe majority of the head injuries are coming from them. I'd also came up with another, I have come up with a number. So I have the RNs at the school at the eight hundred fifty-nine thousand, five hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty-four cents. I came up with the health aides at fifty-two thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and fifty-two cents. For a total of nine one one, nine oh six point eight six.
Are you making a motion?
I'm asking Cindy if she came up with something similar.
Can you repeat that, please? Nine one one?
Nine one one, nine oh six point eight six.
Okay, so no motion yet, but I know.
Not yet, I'm asking.
Director Landry wanted to speak.
Can I just add, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that if I remember, you don't set, the VNA doesn't set these hours, the Board of Ed determines. don't set, the VNA doesn't set these hours. The Board of Ed determines what they need and you work with them.
Correct.
Okay, so if we were to make changes to this, to reducing the number of hours for either the health aides or the RNs, this, the Board of Ed would have to decide how to incorporate that in the schools. I just want to make sure that this is not coming from the VNA. It's coming from what the school says they need.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, that's absolutely correct.
So when you say, I, I can't really speak how that would impact the school. If you were to make a cut to the budget, it would be up to the Board of Ed to explain what would happen in the school system and how they would incorporate those changes.
So again, then it's, um, just like with most of the board budget, we can, we can suggest things, but then they have the final discretion as to how they would implement it, whether they would get rid of the health aides or get rid of RNs.
So if we left a certain dollar amount there, they can decide how to distribute-
Whatever they want to do with it, correct. Councilor Overy?
Well, I would suggest that we leave it alone because we really don't know the answers to what we're asking. Uh, I think it might be good if we researched it and learned a lot more about it. I'd love to talk to some of the principals of the school and ask them what they see as the need. And then I think we might feel a whole lot more comfortable with this. But at this point, I personally don't feel that I know enough about it to, to make a cut to it. I think we should research it and in the future, you know, we'd be prepared to ma- to make that determination. So, uh, I can't imagine, you know, myself being, uh, a nurse at one ti- being at, at any place by yourself. I don't care if they're little or they're big. I drove a bus and that was a challenge. Never mind taking care of them when they're sick. So, uh, I think we should leave it alone for now.
Any other comments or motions?
I have to agree with Leanne. I think that, um, we're entering a territory that we're completely unfamiliar with. And, um, to put in a figure of the fifty thousand dollars, is that going to be one person or two? It's, it's, um, uh, something that we would then have to implement it. If we implemented, we'd then have OKEB to consider for everybody. A lot of additional costs that would be incurred so that we're not really saving everything that we'd like to save. But I think there might be other ways that we can work with the Board of Ed and find out exactly what the situation is.
Councilors of Perry.
Is there a formula by statute that says how many health aides there have to be in each school?
No.
One per district is what the general statutes say.
I'm sorry?
She said, she said, um, earlier that the Connecticut general statutes since nineteen eighty s to say one nurse per district, district.
One nurse per district.
Is what she's telling us.
Yeah. Well, we, we, we all agree that the, the number of nurses is, is, is adequate. Our problem now is that we're faced with voting on a budget item and we have a responsibility to know what we're voting on. So the, what's developing now with Leanne's comment and yours is that we don't know what we're voting on and therefore we should vote on the full amount. Uh, I think that's as much of an error as underfunding. We have a responsibility to the taxpayer in this, in this town to do things as efficiently as possible. And we don't know what efficiency level is in this area. And we are, uh, we're at a loss. I'm not sure what we would get with additional research either or how we're going to do the research. So we can't, I, I, you know, I'm tempted to say, let's table this to two weeks from now. However, uh, I don't know that we're going to be any further ahead in terms of knowledge in another two weeks. Uh, but right now, we're voting on something that we don't fully understand.
Councilor Parker.
Would it be possible with the Board of Ed's permission, I, no names, to get how many students have medical issues in the schools as a number per school? That way, maybe that will help the counselors know, understand the concerns, not just diabetics. The people who have food allergies or asthma. I, I think that might help and give them a breakdown.
Um, with the board's permission, I'd be have, you know, I would do so. I'd be able to, uh, provide, um, medical, uh, conditions that are at the school and extenuating circumstances.
Just numbers. I'm just looking for numbers.
But it would definitely have to be with the board's permission.
Per school.
Correct.
Thank you.
So this is where we are. We can vote the full number that's on the floor. Someone can make an amended motion and we could vote on that amended motion. Or we will not table. We will postpone to a time definite. And I would suggest we postpone to a time definite Monday, April ninth, when the Board of Ed will be here. And at that point, you could ask them that question as well. So those are the three options. So we either vote the, the amount that's on the floor, somebody amend it, we vote the amended number or not to table, but to postpone to a time definite. And I would suggest Monday, April ninth. I think it has to be Monday, April ninth. It has to be our next session.
Will we have any time? Will there be any independent investigation at that time?
If you wish there to be independent investigation, you are welcome to do so.
I'm just concerned that we're gonna, we're gonna be in the same situation on Monday night. That's two days from now that we're in now. And we will be just as ignorant then as we are now.
Town manager.
What was the date that we scheduled the school?
Monday, April ninth.
I didn't think it was the ninth, was it?
Yes.
Was it? Okay. That doesn't give them any time to do the, I don't see having that
research done by Monday.
I think it has to be on the next-
So we'll just keep postponing it until they're ready?
So, so then we have three choices. We can vote. You can amend or we can postpone until Monday night. Councilor Morosik.
I recommend we vote tonight because we're seeing it, a trend from two thousand seventeen to, to the recent number that, and we're not seeing major changes in it. We're seeing a decrease, a slight decrease of anything. And I thi- I think they must have somehow determined the amount of nurses that are required. And let's not try to second guess these people. When it comes to safety in public health, I don't think we should cut it or cut it down any. I think we should just move on.
So someone, if you, if you're inclined to-
I'll wait till I'm done.
-vote this evening.
I'm inclined to vote today.
We can move the question if you'd like.
I agree with, uh, I agree with Rich.
I'm sorry?
We'll make a motion to move the question.
The question has been moved by Councilor Heath. Is there a second to move the question?
Second. What's the question?
To vote on what? So the, the, the question has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of ending debate and voting on the number as on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Okay, so we're gonna call now for a vote on one million eighty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars for one oh five four one. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Franco abstaining. So that passes eight to one to zero. We are on to one zero five four two VNA health promo. So this is the bottom half of page twenty-one now, community health and wellness. Um, I need a motion for that line item, please. We should just do this in order like we do in a normal life.
I'll, I'll make the motion. Um, for account number one zero five four two VNA health promo, I move thirty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Moved by Parker. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Atwater for thirty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And this is the flu clinics, blood push, blood pressure and wellness clinics and indigent care. Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Now that I've already stated, I think these are duplication of services that are already offered in our town.
So again, would you like to move a different number?
I would like to move that we don't fund this program at all.
So move a number. So, um, Franco has moved zero. Is there a second for zero for line item one zero five four two?
Second.
Moved by Franco, seconded by Zepary. And would you like to, you're not required to, uh, report your rationale?
I think it's duplication of services that we offer throughout, um, outside agencies and other clinics that we have throughout town.
Councilor Overy.
If I, if I understood what you said before, this is mostly for people that can't come. You go to them. Was that correct?
For the blood pressure clinics-
Yeah.
And flu clinics. We do staff, we have a very, um, active population that we see at the Groton Senior Center. Uh, we do a lot of wellness and blood pressure, um, and ma- medical management there. We also go to the, uh, senior housing, uh, such as, I said, Paquonic Village, Windham Falls, uh, different places that we, um, go to see the, the residents there.
I think that sometimes what you're seeing as a service that you think is being offered by somebody else is actually being done by them. And, uh-
Well, when I read in here, allegedly does this, they offer services as well.
The flu clinics, we have cut down because we look at those numbers as well to be sure that, um, we are getting a, uh, you know, a decent population there because we don't want to provide services if it's not being populated. And so we have, uh, since discontinued flu clinics at, uh, places like, uh, Paquonic Village and, uh, we used to do Grasso Gardens. But we found that they were able to get to the senior center or to the pharmacy, as you had mentioned. So that is another area that we are always looking at on an, you know, as, and I can't even say annual basis because it, it evolves over the year. And, um, you know, we have cut back where we saw that there wasn't a need because we are changing with the times as well, you know, always. So, um, we are providing these services because we still see the statistics show that people are wanting these services. These are the services, the total opposite of what we were talking about. These are our senior citizens most, mostly.
Director Landry, did you have a comment or a question?
No, I just, the, the number, I was just confirming the number that was moved for Cost Center one, which is the number on page one eighty-one. One million oh eighty-one two seventy-eight.
Yes.
Yes.
Is there any other discussion on one zero five four two? So the number we would be voting first would be the zero. We will vote on that. And if that fails, then we go back to the original motion, which was Councilor Parker's motion of thirty-three nine six eight. So all those in favor of the first amended figure of zero for one zero five four two, say aye.
Aye.
In favor are Zepary and Franco. Opposed? One, two, three, okay. Uh, so seven opposed. Any abstentions? So that motion fails. Two to seven to zero with Zepary and Franco in favor. So now that motion is finished. We are on to the original motion of thirty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight. If there's no further discussion, we will vote on this number. All those in favor of thirty-three thousand nine sixty-eight for one zero five four two, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So seven in favor, two opposed, which is Zepary and Franco. Any abstentions? That passes seven two to zero. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We are on to Groton ambulance. So who moved the last one? We're just gonna go in order here, I think.
We're not doing ambulances.
We're not doing Groton ambulances today? Okay. So, will you do the next one? So we are on to service agencies. One oh, one zero five four five. And I believe this is page twenty-two in the appendix. Councilor Heath, which, oh, sorry. Is there a motion for one zero five four five service agencies?
Uh, I'll make the motion.
For?
Four. Sixty-three thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Heath. Okay, so would the manager just please explain how we came up with, um, the list, a little bit about the committee and so forth?
Sure. Uh, and then I've got, uh, Marge Fundulissis here who actually chairs that committee. So there's a committee made up of, uh, I don't even know all the members offhand. Police is represented, of course, human services. Um, Marge, who else is? Why don't you come up here? But basically, they look through every, uh, every year, they, they, they meet, they go over every request, they consider them, and, and Marge is especially an expert on what other types of social services are out there and available. And then they put it together, they vote on each item, put together a recommended budget and then forward it to me.
The committee is made up of, um, Steve Sinagra from the Groton Town Police, Mark Berry from Parks and Rec, Betty Ann Ryder from the library, myself, and also John Reiner from planning. It's the committee that reviews the outside agency funding requests.
And on page twenty-two, there's the criteria for funding. And the very first thing they say is to make sure that the services are unduplicated in Groton. And it goes on and lists, uh, the other four criteria as well. And I see people here representing, um, the various outside agencies. Does anyone on the council have questions regarding any of these? I'll put in a plug for the homeless hospitality centers having their walk on April twenty-second, I believe. It is a, it is a fundraiser for the center which serves Groton residents as well. And if you are interested, there is a website and it is-
N L H C slash walk.
One more time. N-
N W W, N L H H C slash walk.
N L H C-
H H C.
H H C, okay. Barbara can, call Barbara Nagy. But it's a, it's a very, it's a, um, very nice event. Um, it's done to raise awareness as well as to raise funds. And you get to spend a nice day out in the community with people of like mind. So I highly recommend it. I'm struggling with the symphony. Councilor Franco.
So the, the committee that was put together, they realize, what they came to a conclusion is these are not a duplication of services.
Correct.
So when we have U, um, UCFS compared to the, um, CHC, these are, although it's the same type of service, they're not considered duplicate.
I'm sorry, what was the last part of your question?
The Community Health Center-
Right.
Versus UCFS, we're not considering those duplication of per, of services.
The, the only, um, well, with UCFS, um, we purposely, um, denied the funding for the dental health portion, for example, because we felt that the Community Health Center was providing that. Um, so, and, and again, as it's, it's spelled out on page twenty-three as far as UCFS is concerned, um, we funded them, um, um, for their behavioral health services because, um, in particular, their, um, emergency mobile psych program is of utmost importance for the community. Um, so, um, again, it's, I don't, I don't want to repeat what's, what's written here, but, um, I, and am I answering your question? I'm sorry.
Say, I, yeah, I was just wanted to know if you consider those to be not duplication of services?
As we identified, there, there's certain services that community health is, is taking care of that we felt, um, on, on actually either a, a more local basis even than having people go to Norwich.
I'd like to make, um, an amended motion for one zero five four five service agencies. I move sixty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Second. Moved by Granatowski, seconded by Parker. And my rationale is, um, to restore funding for the Eastern Connecticut Symphony Concert that is provided to approximately eight hundred Groton schoolchildren, um, who go to the Guard Arts Center for special performance for young people. And we don't do a lot, um, on behalf of the town for the arts. So this is a small gesture to support the arts in Groton. Are there any other questions or comments?
Do you want a second on that number?
Um, I believe Councilor Parker already seconded that number. No other questions or comments. So again, process, we vote the first amended figure first, and if that fails, then we go back to the main motion. So the, for account one zero five four five, we are voting on sixty-eight, sixty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can I see hands, please? Because, so Atwater, oh, Schmidt, Atwater, Overy, Granatowski, Parker. Opposed? Zepary, Heath, Franco, Morosik. So abstentions. So five to four to zero. Do you need the names again? You're good? Okay, so the first amended figure- Okay, so the first amended figure passed, thank you. We are on to 10, thank you again, 10547, marine sewage disposal. Can we, here's what we're going to do, I should have done this at the beginning, I apologize for not, can we just start at the end and work our way through? That way, we don't have to keep waiting. So Counselor Moravsek, would you move 10547, please, marine sewage disposal?
10547, marine sewage disposal, I move $19,980.
Second. Moved by Moravsek, seconded by Heed. And we have a gentleman here, would you please introduce yourself?
Pete Chapel, Pete's Marine Services, I run the pump-out boat program.
Thank you. Would you just like to explain what it is for those who might be uncertain?
Yeah, so we run, we run three, we have three boats, we run Thames River, Fisher's Island, and the Mystic River. Fisher's Island pays in because it's New York, but because it's so close to us, it just made sense that the Thames River boat do Fisher's Island. So we pump out, we're basically like a septic truck, but on the water, it's a matched, it's a partnership with the state, the state gets federal money, they reimburse us 75% of our budget. We have to show, it's, it's a reimbursement, so we have to show all of our expenses, and they get 75% of what is spent. And then we have to come up with the other 25% matching funds in order to get our full budget. So the town is, that, you know, that's a percentage, and then we go to the marinas, they donate slips, some of the marinas are donating stuff for the boats to help keep the cost down on the operation of the boats. I end up donating a lot of my time and mechanical abilities working on the boats. Last year, we pumped out 160,000 gallons out of the Mystic River. There's approximately 19 marinas that we do, the mooring fields. So we keep a lot of sewage out of the water. We went, we went to a seminar a few weeks ago that E.L. New Haven is doing, and it was, it was pretty interesting how bad raw sewage is in the waters and what they're finding with antibiotics getting into the water and the bacteria being antibiotic resistant, and then it gets into our body and becomes resistant. So every bit of water, every bit of sewage that we keep out of the water, obviously, is, is safer for everybody, and keeping our waters clean is real important to our local resources. Questions, I guess?
So this is on page 83 in your appendix, if you're interested. So Zepari and then Moravsek.
I'm looking at page 83, so I may be asking a question about what's there. What percentage of the 25% that you need help for, does this $19,980 represent?
Our budget this year is $199,000, so it's approximately 10%.
And what does Fisher's Island pay?
Last year, last year, they gave us, I think it was about $10,000.
And what does Stonington pay?
Stonington, last year, gave us, I think it was around $1,500, $1,600, and we're trying to up that, we're in negotiations with them now, trying to get that number moved up.
Because if you're doing the Mystic River marinas, you're doing a lot on Mason's Island as well.
We don't, we don't go over to Stonington's side. Well, we go to the Stonington side of the Mystic River, but we don't go into Stonington Harbor.
No, no, but you, and the Stonington side of the Mystic River, you're providing services to the town.
There's two marinas on Stonington's side that we have services for.
Okay. All right.
Counselor Moravsek.
Where do you dump the disposal? It goes, it goes into the pump-out station, some of the, some of the marinas have stationary stations that we go into and we discharge the boats, and it goes into the town sewage. The town or, how about the city? Yeah, we go over to the city, yeah, we go, they, the city has a pump-out station right at the city treatment plant. Yeah. So we can go there and discharge the boats right there. Obviously, from, from the Mystic River to take a boat with 400 gallons of sewage over to the Thames River isn't, it's just not effective. So we discharge Mystic, it's discharged in Mystic. You don't have to pay for that dumping? No, and, and the people don't pay to have the boats pumped out. In 2006, they used to charge $5 for every pump-out, and the state said, you know what, we're going to become zero, and they don't charge, it's a free service. And when they did that, it went up, the amount of sewage that was pumped out was four times the amount because it was free versus $5. When you pump out a boat, do you take the registration of that boat's down? We don't, we take the boat name, so I have it, when they, when they go to pump out, well, there's several different ways of getting a pump-out, but we have an online service where they can go online and book a pump-out, or they can call on the radio for day-to-day operations. So if they go online and book, I have all that, I have their name, their phone number, have all that information. If they do it via just the radio, the operator writes, writes the name of the boat down and the marina in a, in a notebook, and then we. I'm just curious, everybody from like, Lianic and New London could come here and you could. We get them from the Bahamas, we get, they come from all over that we pump out. But I mean, you're primarily for the Groton area. Yes, yes.
Counselor Heed?
I think this is very important to fund, you have to not look at the fact that it's free for the boat owner, you have to look at sort of the way people's brains are wired. I work in hotels, so I worked at a hotel in Washington, D.C., where people would come to a five-star restaurant and pay $1,000 for dinner, and they drop a $20 bill for the bellman when they're checking out, or not checking out, when they're getting their car out of the garage. The hotel wanted a piece of that, so they started charging $5. Well, the people stopped tipping. They paid $5 and complained viciously about having to pay, which led to the bellman then stealing the money, so it just, it was, it was very bad. So I support this.
I'm always torn on this. I think there's a lack of personal responsibility for the people with the boats that would not pay to have their boat pumped out and instead rely on the people of Groton, some of whom don't have boats, to subsidize their nice little weekend trips or whatever. So I'm torn between paying for something where other people can afford it and they refuse to do the responsible thing, and taking care of the water so that all of us don't have to deal with it. So I'm always tempted to vote against this. Convince me otherwise.
Counselor Overy?
I'll just say what basically Heed was saying before, by the difference in the amounts. If we don't do this, they're just going to dump it. So if we want to protect the sound, then we've got an excellent service in place and we've got to keep it going.
Counselors Zepari?
I, I would agree with that. I think this is a very important service. We do have to continue it. We all have an interest in the, in the environment, especially of Long Island Sound. So I'd like to thank you for doing the job. I'm not sure I'd like working on one of the boats, but as much as I like being on the water, but having clean water to look at, I remember, I can tell you that I remember when raw sewage was dumped from the houses into the Mystic River, and I used to do boating on the Mystic River in a little bit of time in the water, and you never knew what you were swimming next to, but it was, I, I think cleaning up the water is an important function, and thank you.
Is there any other discussion, or Counselor Atwater?
Is the pump-out's always done through you, or are there pump stations where the boat can just go and?
There are pump stations along the Mystic River, well, there's, there's some in the Mystic River, and there's some in, there's two in New London and one over on the city side in Groton that they can go to. A lot of people don't like to do it themselves, so they'd rather have us come and, and pump it out.
But if someone were sailing through it.
Right, or if we're busy, or are, right, or the boats weren't out for whatever reason, then yeah. I mean, we run seven days a week, so there's always a boat on the water. But if for some reason, typically, they run nine to five, if the weather's going to be bad, we'll run earlier in the morning to try to get the reservations done, or we'll stay out later if we have to. So the hours change a little bit, not a lot, but, so if somebody was overflowing and needed a pump-out at 7:00 at night, they could go to a primary station as long as that station was open.
And I would just like to comment, Counselor, that from a safety and health point of view, as a taxpayer in Groton, I'm willing to pay for this.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, we'll vote on 10547, marine sewage disposal, in the amount of $19,980. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, so moved unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we are skipping Mystic River ambulance as well, Mr. Manager?
Correct.
So then we are on to Mystic Noank Library, 10549. Counselor Moravsek, would you move that number, please? And this is on page, let me find it for you guys. I'm sorry.
10549, Mystic Noank Library, I move $100,000.
Hold on one second, I just was handed a note by our parliamentary unofficial. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I move account number 10549, Mystic Noank Library, for the amount of $100,000.
Moved by Parker, is there a second? Seconded by Schmidt. Hello?
Hi, my name is Chris Johnson, I'm the director at the Mystic and Noank Library, and I believe you did get a copy of the report that I submitted to the town manager, which highlights the services that we've been giving to the greater Mystic community in this past year. And I did want to highlight two or three things, it's a very long meeting, so I won't take too much time.
This is on page 95, I'm sorry for taking that before.
That's fine. And of course, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those as well. This year, we are very proud to be celebrating the 125th anniversary of our library. That means 125 years of continuous service to the community. It's a factor that we're proud of and that we're celebrating, and we do have quite a few programs coming up, I invite you to attend. Most of those are privately funded. We do a lot of development work, and that's how we stay open. So in particular, the things I wanted to highlight was, we did get a grant from the Groton Educational Foundation, which enabled us to launch a Thousand Books Before Kindergarten program, which is a very important program for celebrating early literacy and school readiness in the community. Of course, we're in Mystic, so we serve both towns, so that's open to both folks from the Groton side as well as folks from the Stonington side. And to date, since we've launched the program a few months ago, we have 62 registered readers, which is really families. Four children have completed the challenge, which is a thousand books, and altogether, there's been a total of 6,000 books read in the program, and it's still going strong, we're just getting started with it, actually. We also were able to obtain grant funds from the Mystic Rotary, we combined it with one of our private donor funds, and we're happy to provide access to an online brain training tool called Brain HQ. There's been a lot of studies about how training your brain effectively can help to diminish the possibilities of Alzheimer's and dementia, but it's really available to all ages, and we're pleased to present that. We negotiated with the vendor to provide it to all Groton cardholders. So often, it's usually limited to one library, but as a Groton library, we're able to offer that to cardholders of both Groton Public Library as well as Bill Memorial Library. We feel that was an important service that we've provided. We do quite a bit of collaboration with the Bill Memorial Library on the Food for Fines to help support the Groton Human Services Food Pantry, and we're also working with the Bill right now to create and fund a teen reading program similar to the one that we did with the Thousand Books Before Kindergarten. It would be, actually be a program that we would create ourselves. Thousand Books Before Kindergarten is a, is a basically national program that we adopted, but Wendy and I have been talking about putting together a program, something similar for teens. Thousand might be a little overwhelming, but we're thinking something like 100 books before you graduate high school, so we're brainstorming and then hoping to get private funding for that. As far as supporting the greater town, we are using the Arc of New London County as our landscape services this year, and we've also recently hired on Seabird Enterprises, another local nonprofit, and they're assisting with our custodial services. They alternate with our one part-time custodian that we have. And this, we have just launched a private program privately funded through a donor, the Young Engineers Club. This is unique in, I think in the state, to be honest with you. It's a 10-session program, it's for students or children ages 10 and up, and they're learning the basics of electrical engineering and software development. We were lucky to have, he's now actually graduated, but when he came to us, he was a graduate student from New Haven, an electrical engineer, who felt it was really critical to provide these services outside of the school environment where sometimes kids, for whatever reason, girls in particular, don't feel comfortable studying the sciences and studying engineering. And again, through private funding, it's free, all of the materials are provided, 3D printers are provided, and all the other technology, and we used him to help actually develop the program, so it's really very innovative. Overall, I just wanted to mention also, we do, we do a lot with a little. We do have five full-time staff, although full-time in our definition is 30 hours per week, unlike the rest of the town, and 11 part-time employees, and out of that, nine are Groton residents, so we are trying to hire within. The planning presentation early this morning reminded me something that it put into my bigger report, is that we do a lot to support the local merchant communities. We're members of the Downtown Mystic Merchant Association, as well as the Groton, the Greater Mystic Chamber of Commerce, the Eastern Connecticut Chamber of Commerce, and we provide programming to support their initiatives. So we're a tourist attraction, we're literally on the tourist maps. People come to Mystic to, one of the things that they visit is our library, we're across the street from the Spicer Mansion, and we try to provide another entryway into the history of Mystic and Groton, which I think is a valuable asset for the community. And we also work with the Small Business Association and the Score Association, so we're providing two to three programs every month on developing small business and supporting small business. All of that is, of course, pre-charge the community. So I'll get off my soapbox, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have for me.
Counselor Moravsek?
It's a beautiful building that you have there, you know, it's probably a hard one to maintain, too.
It is very much a hard.
I noticed that this year, you were only, you're only asking for 100,000, last year was 122.
Well, to be honest, we actually asked for more, but the town manager has, you know, recommended a reduction, and we understand there's tough times all around. Of course, we could always use more, I mean, basically, we match every town dollar with four to five dollars that we raise in other ways.
How about this town of Stonington, are they chipping in too?
They chip in a portion. Our service is approximately 60% Groton, 40% Stonington, depending on what factor you're looking at, whether you're looking at cardholders, whether you're looking at circulation. We don't count numbers for programs, so I can't give you an honest assessment of how many people are coming in the door, because as a public library, all three of us, we can't keep anyone from coming in the door. That's our, our state-chartered role, is free programming and open to all.
Are you part of that borough with?
We are, we all are. And again, as Betty Ann mentioned, that's a state-regulated program. We actually do get money for servicing Stonington in addition to the money that Stonington gives us.
Very nice building down there.
Thank you.
Counselors Zepari?
What does Stonington give you?
We were able to get them up to $86,500. We're doing a similar process on the Stonington side right now, and it seems likely that we'll stay at that number.
Okay, and when did, what did they give you last year?
The same number, $86,500, yes.
Thank you. As long as I have the floor, I just wanted to thank you for your service and your enthusiasm. It's obvious the energy that you're putting into the programs that are going there is a reflection of your personality, so.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. We have been working very hard, which is why you see a marketing line in our budget. I mean, you don't, if people don't know what you're doing, they don't know to come and take advantage of it.
Do you want to say something?
Have you, in terms of funding, we have the Groton Town Public Library, so I'm wondering if you've approached, if this is like a Mystic-Stonington, you've approached Stonington, if you approached the Mystic neighborhood for funding, like through the fire district or?
As far as tax funding, well, if you look at our budget, right, so whether you're giving us 122,000, which would be nice, or 100,000, which is what's being proposed, our actual operating budget is just under 700,000. So we're already getting quite a bit of money locally. We have an annual fund that brings in about $120,000 every year, that's our local folks in Groton that are paying. I, I think you would agree that likely, people would not be open to another separate tax, and if anything that would hurt, I think, the municipal library, if we were to try and say, you know, we're going to tax you to use this library, I think you're going to get pushed back from the municipal library, and I like to work collaboratively. Groton's a very large town, and Mystic, in particular- Groton's a very large town, and Mystic in particular is a community that is well entrenched here, and I know pays a very large percentage of, I think, the overall taxes, if you look at Mystic, No Ink, Groton, Long Point, plus the businesses in that sector. That's a strong tax dollar there. So, I understand that we can only get a percentage of our budget through tax dollars, but we put a very large effort on private funding and legacy giving. I mean, that's what keeps us open, that's why we're open 125 years.
That's what I wanted to just encourage you to pursue more of the endowments and the legacy giving. As you know, we have a very fine town library.
Mm-hmm.
And then we have two community libraries. And the other community library, not to put you on the spot, Bill Memorial Library, but you traditionally ask for only $20,000.
Mm-hmm.
So we're providing five times more for your facility, so I would just encourage you to pursue more endowments, please.
And we do, we do, and our circulation is about nine times greater than Bill Memorial. And not to knock Bill Memorial, but I mean, we're a very large library. We're open, I mean, in many towns, we would be the municipal library. We're 11,000 square feet, we're open 54 hours a week. We circulate, if you combine our total circulation, and I mean, I keep my Groton numbers, because that's what you're interested in, but we're circulating almost 50,000 items a year, which is, I mean, it's significant for the staff, and, you know, as I mentioned, every dollar you give us, we're matching it by four to five dollars, either through private, or, you know, state, or really wherever we can get it. I mean, we're out there basically shaking the hat, we really are.
I would encourage you to continue pursuing our legacies.
Oh, well, we of course are.
Councilor Zepper?
You said that you've been in existence for 125 years, I'm not sure that's accurate, because I know my wife used to go to the Mystic Library as a child. And she's told me that if I don't vote to support the Mystic Library today, I'd better not come home.
I thank your wife.
She's that old?
He didn't say that, Councilor Morosik. All right, anyone else have comments, questions? So we are looking at 10549 Mystic No Ink Library, and the amount of $100,000. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, so moved unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate it, thank you. I did bring some flyers, but I'll leave them in the back.
Thank you. 10549A. Who are we on? I don't know whose turn it is.
My name's Perry, sorry.
That's okay.
Bill Memorial Library for $18,700.
Moved by Franco, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Aubrey. And we have familiar faces. Hello? We're on page 97 in the appendix, if you need to take a look at what was requested. Would you please just introduce yourselves?
Good afternoon, I'm Janet Downs, I'm the Secretary of the Bill Memorial Board. We are very grateful that the town has been generous with us in past years, and we appreciate your time and consideration this morning. We're down a couple of people today, our President unfortunately is recovering from a very bad auto accident, and our Vice President, who is Acting President, is a tax preparer, so I think she's not allowed out of the office until the 17th of April. We do have with us our Director Wendy Connell, our Treasurer Rob Zulliani, we have a couple of other folks, we have Mary Jane Carl, who is our Children's Librarian, and a couple more trustees, Barbara Tarbox and Mark Offinger. So we almost, we almost outnumber you. We try to outnumber you every year, but it didn't quite work out this year. I think that Wendy and Rob are going to give a little background for our request, and answer any of your questions.
Yes, good afternoon. Bill Memorial has a proud heritage of serving the town, the residents of Groton for 128 years. Our request for funding amounts to just 57 cents for each Groton resident, and that's based on the number that we requested, not the 18,7, that's in the book. For this minimal investment, Groton residents have access to up-to-date technology, quick access to library materials, fun and educational programs for all ages, and a historic community meeting place. So far this year, we've given 170 programs with 4,800 people attending. We supplement our town funding with fundraising, grants, and in-kind donations. So far this year, we've written nine grants and received $5,400 for programs and materials. In addition to our services outlined in your binder, we have recently set a new attendance record with our annual bunny bonanza, which is kind of a springtime program we have with live rabbits, it's a family program, and we had 420 people come through our doors that day for that program. We started a Girls Who Code chapter, that's completely grant-funded, and we're wrapping up our first year. And we hosted two community cafes with the Groton, the City of Groton Town, sorry, the City of Groton Police Department and city officials, welcoming the community into the library to meet with the local officials. I want to thank you all for your past support and for your time this morning.
As Treasurer, I sign the checks, so I'm going to try to see if I can give you an explanation, how we run our programs, and where the money is spent, and how it's received. We have three major sources for revenue, and one is the portfolio income that we have on our investments, and that supports about 81% of our budget. The other eight, 8.5% of it is actually the town grant that we receive directly, and we appreciate what you've done with us in the past. And the other 19% really represents other minor sources, such as fundraising. We have a grant from the Community Foundation of Eastern Connecticut for about $4,000, and it's other small programs, but it's basically our portfolio, town grant, and other small programs, giving us 100% of our operating budget. Now, on the expense side, we spend approximately 81% in running our library. That represents labor, books, technical services, new computers. The basic services for, for the needs of the public who come in our door, and we take care of everyone. The other 19% represents buildings and grounds, let me give you some detail specifically, such as heating, outside contractors for, which is expensive, lawn services, snow removal. We do things, we do other things included in that, would be insurance for liability, workman's compensation, that's about $8,000. We have also our professional services for our tax return, our financial reports at the end of the year, they run around a little over $4,000. So it's an accumulation of our funding, of our investment portfolio, 81% covers almost our complete operating budget for the library itself. It's the 19% that we need help with, that represents the town's portion and other sources. Here's where our real need is, is going forward in the future. We have a burden, unfortunately, if you've been in our building, you've seen how lovely it is, how warm it is, and how pleasant it is for our patrons who show up. This building is getting older, its requiring needs are starting to accumulate, things are starting to happen that we need now to give it attention. For example, we have a heating-cooling system, it's approximately 15 years old, it represents two hot boilers, it represents four outside compressors, and four inside air heaters. This system's starting to show age, it will probably start to show failure. We're concerned about when to fix this, and how much at a time. We're looking at a cost of probably between $7,000 and $10,000. We have also trees, we have a lot of trees in our backyard, they're showing age, we will take them down and remove them, hopefully as we can, one at a time, not all together. We're talking about $10,000 all total, there's a lot of trees back there. We have gutters, they're showing age, unfortunately, they're copper, we're trying to find another way of replacing them, we're looking at another $25,000. Electrical fixtures, we need to do some upgrading, we're thinking about $5,000 of work there. We're talking about iron railings, they need to be replaced to make sure people don't fall. We have, we have a handicap ramp, we're thinking about $5,000 to keep that back in shape. And we have other things like outdoor hardwood floors, another $5,000. All these projects will not be done altogether, we will plan to do them as we see, as we fund them, as we're able to get funds. In the past, from like 2008 to 2016, eight straight years, our request to the town was $20,000 a year, it was never increased, never changed. Then in 2015, we did a major repair to our building. We had a $24,000 roof repair, major leaks, and we did $14,000 of interior glass windows, and we asked the town to increase our $20,000 contribution, and we were able to get 23 that year, and we appreciate that assistance. Last year, we came back, we asked for the same 23, but due to economic times, the library realized we were willing to assist the town, and with the town's cooperation jointly, we, it went back to $20,000. We are here today, back to you, again asking for $23,000. We do need your help, it's something we need to work together on. We do our best to generate as much money as possible on outside programs, but it seems this building is starting to show major need, and we need some of your assistance. In short, we're looking to go forward in the future, and we need your help. I'd like, I would entertain any type of questions you may have at this time.
Councilor Morosik.
Yeah, last year, I was here at the budget meeting, and it was doom and gloom because of the state. And I remember you coming up to us and making the suggestion to cut your budget.
Correct.
And I thought that was very commendable. This year, I'd like to make a motion to put $23,000 on the, on the board.
So there's a first amended motion for $23,000, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Aubrey. Did you want to explain that further?
Well, I, I think the library is, is a beautiful building, and like you mentioned, it is, it's showing her age, and she needs to be fixed. And I think that.
I'm sure my age.
Like we all do. And I, I think you're, you're correct about the amount of monies that you need for the various items that have to be repaired, and I think over time, you'll get it done, as long as, you know, we partner with you on it. And that's why I'd like to see that being done.
Are there any other comments or questions? Councilor Zepper, and then he.
You know, I am sympathetic to the cause, however, we are in as much trouble this year with the state funding as we were last year. The state is in bad shape, and it doesn't look like they're going to be giving the grants that we need. And we have to tighten our belts all around. And if we don't go ahead with this, as you've requested, we go ahead with the manager's recommended $18,700, I think you will survive because of the, of the spirit that you all contain and your enthusiasm for that, but I think we have to look at the whole picture. So I, I think we have to consider the original recommendation.
Councilor Heed?
Um, no, the City of Groton pays the electricity and water, but it is a neighborhood library, so how many people outside of the city, do you have a number, like how many people outside the city actually use it?
Well, we do get Groton Town residents, and people from neighboring towns come in, New London, Uncasville, just all, all over. Mystic, Stonington. I don't have any numbers for you.
It's okay, you see me there. Can I ask the Town Manager, what was the rationale to put in 18,000?
I think that's approximately 20% of the, of the requested amount, but just generally wrestling with the budget this year, and you probably don't see a lot of department feedback that they want to see outside agencies cut prior to them being cut, or at least see parity in that, so effort to, and it's a beautiful library, and I've had, recently had a great tour of it, but just trying to balance all the different needs.
And we just did pass a 20% cut to the Mystic No Ink Library.
Councilor Aubrey, and then that one.
I was just going to mention that as people come into Groton, and I have an opportunity to meet them and do the tours that I love to do, the libraries are an economic driver for the town of Groton, and they're all special in their own way, but I will tell you that this particular library, people love to know that there's a library in that area, and it's a special one, and I don't want to be as prejudiced as I'm sounding right now, as I'm looking at the other library director behind you, but, but I think it's important that we work with the 23,000 and make sure that we keep that, that jewel.
Councilor Atwater?
I just have a question, I'm new to Groton, can you have a capital fund drive to raise the money for the things that you said you anticipate?
We did, for example, two years ago, when we did the $14,000 window replacement, Wendy, our Director, came up with $14,000, it was not in our budget that year, we solved that problem equally, it was, but the unfortunate thing is, the $24,000 we spent for the roofing had to come out of our savings. It was a major hit, and it's, we knew of that then, along with this other stuff. Can I also add some additional information? For, you know, you get city services helping us out with electric bill, they used to do our sidewalks, snowballing. They don't do that anymore, so unfortunately, that burden has now increased on our snowballing cost to the, each year, it's been going on for a while. Let me explain, as I was trying to get the ratio between revenue, 81% is funded by our portfolio, 8.4% represents the town's contribution, and the 19% are other items. If you reduce our budget, for example, the only source we have to offset that is to take it out of the Portfolio Investor Program. And what that'll do is, it'll shrink our principal, minor as that may be, it will devastate long-term the future revenue of the library generated in the future. That's not a good direction for us to head. We are, we continue to try to improve that portfolio, but as you know, the stock market is very unpredictable, and we just try to hold our own, just like everyone else. But if we, if we have to, we will go to that source, but that's the only option we have.
I just wanted to finish saying that I support Councilor Morosik's motion of 23,000.
Councilor Heed?
Wendy, last time I was there last week, I was given a tour by somebody who volunteers his time to do a lot of maintenance.
Yes.
Could you maybe comment on that?
Uh, well, yeah, we have.
He volunteers his time, so I don't know about the, what are they called, the drywall and stuff like that, that he uses, I don't know where that money comes from.
Well, we pay him materials, but he volunteers his time, he's very handy, and has been able to help us in a number of areas, repairing some rotted window sills, with the gutters, he's put a treatment on so that it covers the holes, because they've just been patched and patched, but he's managed to patch them again, so, to remediate water damage in our basement, he created some downspouts, he's, he's just very handy, and we are able to just pay his material cost.
I'm very lucky to have you, because you've done a lot of small little projects, solving many of our little headaches, but it's not a permanent fix, these are quick solutions, simple things, you know, yard projects, you could, you could handle in a day or two. These are not the solutions that we're really looking forward to in the future.
So it states here that the library was built in 1890, and it's one of the oldest libraries in the state. And I know there's been some items I've been seeing in the news recently about some of our historic buildings and being left to go in disrepair, and there are funds that they have set aside for these to be repaired. Have you tried to tap any of that, or have you looked on the? Or have you looked on the, further to the, more of a national level to see if there's anything that you can...
Yes, we are looking into, into restoration grants. We've recently applied to the Neighborhood Assistance Act for help to replace, um, the HVAC system. So we're hopeful that that may happen this year. And yes, we've looked at, we have a freelancer who's doing only grant writing, and that's one of her tasks is, uh, the restoration projects.
Okay, thank you.
Is the building on the National Trust registry? Can it be put on the National Trust registry? Because then that might open up some more possibilities for, for grants.
Uh, I guess the board has looked into it. I think we're on a registry as part of the Historic Groton Bank Neighborhood, but the building itself is not like a, on the registry by itself.
So I would say I would pursue that if you have someone that is, has the time to, um, look into that. Because if you get put on the National Trust registry, then you might be able to get some funding, um, through that avenue. And you might be able to then also get more people sympathetic to your cause if you could say, oh, it's a National Trust building, and, you know, let's throw some money at them or whatever it is. I also just wanted to say, um, I think the adulting programs, that's you guys, right?
Yes.
Those are great.
Thank you.
Councilor Morawski.
I just have one question for the town manager. How are we doing on that land swap with, with Bill Library?
We, we held a meeting, but we haven't had a second one yet.
So just, as a matter of explanation, they're working with Economic Development. Do you want to take it? You can explain about it, and I can.
Uh, just, just kicking around possibilities with the Groton Heights building, you know, that's on our next list, uh, to look at, putting an RFP out too. There might be some advantages to swapping some land that the library has and some land involving, uh, that the town has. It might make some sense to allow better development in Groton Heights and, and protect, uh, the, uh, the buffer along the library itself to keep that looking good and free of obstacles.
Are there any other, Councilor Schmidt?
Well, I, I just wanted to say, if it's possible, if there's anybody in Groton that has not had the opportunity to go through the Bill Library, that they should make sure that they have that on their list and, uh, go there, because it is an absolutely beautiful architecture, and the interior is wonderful when you go inside. And, uh, I would hope that the state would be able to help with something for restoration, because they do have that cultural commission. And I don't know if you've applied there or not, the Historic Commission. Um, and I think they have a meeting later this month.
Okay.
I'll take you, David.
I've been...
Oh, you've been there? Okay. Even David has gone, and he's brand new.
So, um, let's see. We have first process, we have the first amended motion for twenty-three thousand dollars for one zero five four nine A Bill Memorial Library. So if there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on that. All those in favor, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Let me, let me write. So Zepari and Franco, any abstentions? So that passes seven to two to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that ends outside agencies. Do, does the council need a break before we go on to Groton Long Point, or you just want to plow ahead?
Oh, let's just...
Excuse me?
I'll stop the last thing.
Short, last thing.
Short break? I've had a request for a short break. So let's try to do five minutes. That's what I said last time, too. Okay, we're back in session, and we are on account one zero nine one, Groton Long Point. Um, and in the appendix, it is on page one seventy-seven for the detail. And we have representatives from the association here. If you'd just like to introduce yourselves, please, sir.
Hi, uh, Madam Mayor, actually, council members. My name is Mike Flynn. I'm the president of Groton Long Point Association. To my right, actually, is our vice president and director of public works, Steve Panikoff. And to my left is our chief of police, Chief Jeff Nixon. And thank you for having us.
So, um, during the break, Mr. Flynn noted that there was an error in the cover letter that was sent to us, and you would find that on page one seventy-six. And that is the number that was transferred into the budget book proper, and that is an incorrect number, I've been advised. The correct number is on page one seventy-seven in their chart, which is the one eighty-six seven nine four.
So I'll make a motion for...
Hold on one second, please. So Finance Director Landry, with this account, do you prefer we do police, highway, and street lighting all separate? Okay. So, um, the first item is one zero nine one zero Groton Long Point Police.
I'll make a motion for two hundred and eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Moved by Heath. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Parker. And on page one eighty-six, um, that is the requested amount, and it's showing an increase over the twenty eighteen. Are there any questions or discussions? Does everybody know where we are? Do we need time getting there? So, one, wait it, okay, so the Public Works Department is in the appendix. I don't believe there's anything there from the police.
Yeah, backside.
On the flip of the Public War, oh, there it is. Okay, Public Safety. So that's one seventy-eight. And then the budget itself is on one eighty-six. Councilor Zepari.
Um, could you tell us why there's a forty, was a forty-four thousand dollar plus increase in the police budget?
Um, over the last few years, the police budget, um, for the, from the approval of the council and the RTM has decreased, um, in conjunction, actually, with couples we've had, actually, with, uh, funding, actually, for the town and the state. We've actually made our cuts, actually, to a point that we're at that level that we really need to get back on track at that point. We asked for a, um, percentage of the cost of our, um, Public Safety Police Department, um, and somewhat less than our counter, uh, people actually in the three-tier community here receives.
I, I'm still confused. It was two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, uh, for two thousand eighteen. And now you're looking for two hundred and eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty. What is, what is the additional forty-four thousand dollars going to go for?
Uh, most of it is actually for labor. Uh, we have a new, uh, three-year contract with our department that was finalized this year. Um, and again, actually, there, last year, we were cut down, uh, percentage. Year before, we were cut down below that as well, too, for our request.
What's the percentage increase that that represents? I didn't do the math.
Um, actually, it represents about...
Eighteen and a half percent.
Eighteen percent.
Eighteen percent increase in, in, in pay increases for...
No, 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 no. That's overall, actually, of the entire budget. Uh, the eighteen percent is overall the budget.
Okay.
At that point.
We're talking now just about the police budget that's gone from two forty-three to two eighty-eight seven fifty.
Correct.
Uh, and, um, that looks like it forty, that's pretty close to twenty percent, too, I would imagine.
Okay. Again, actually, there, um, last year, we asked for, um, a slight increase and was reduced five percent on our budget. Year before that, we asked for a slight increase and reduced again. We're trying to get back to where we were as a level-funded budget, actually.
So you're trying to...
Basically, with a small increase each year.
Yeah.
But each year, we were reduced each year, not increased at all.
Yeah.
And that, and we still ask for a, um, percentage of our budget from the town.
Things are really no different now than they were before, you just want more money. Is that correct?
No.
Kind of a harsh way to put it, but, uh...
That's okay, actually.
And I don't want to be rude to you.
Absolutely. Don't mind that, actually, there. But we've had an increase of our cost over quite a few years, just like all the other groups have as well, too.
Yeah.
We've taken the decreases, actually, each year. But at a point of, we do renegotiate the contract, which has been an increase, health has been increased at that point there. We hope to actually get back to a level field that we were before. We actually have submitted budgets over many years, actually, and as you noticed, it kept going down a little bit. We were funded a lot better years ago than we are now.
So as with the city of Groton, we don't, um, have a payment for the chief, and I don't think we, you have included the chief here. This is just officers, right?
Correct.
Councilor Obrin.
Could you tell me a little more about the video that you were talking about? You said you added video?
No, I must have misspoke.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I apologize.
That's all right. I thought I heard you say...
Sorry about that, my fault if I did. Apologize.
Nope. Just heard you say something. I thought I heard you say something.
Sorry.
Councilor Franco?
So, what? Did you, I'm sorry, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I, on here, it doesn't list anywhere the actual number of staffing you have.
Uh, we have four full-time, uh, officers and four part-time officers, and then summer help.
And how many summer help? I'm sorry.
Uh, actually, it depends on during the season at that point there. We have, oh, I think anywhere from four to six through the season. Mainly four, actually, unless somebody has to be called in.
So four to six in the summer, is that part-time?
Part-time. And they aren't full-time officers, they're part-time, meaning actually, um, we call actually a CSO, a summer help.
All right, I'm confused. So there's four full-time?
Four full-time, four part-time.
Four part-time, and then four to six are part-time.
And then during the summer, actually, we have what's called a CSO that helps, actually, with the, uh, increase in population.
Okay. So twelve to fourteen total during the summer.
Yes.
Eight, eight the rest of the year.
Yes.
And then the, um, so the two hundred and twelve doesn't actually break it down into what other is. What does that exactly stand for?
Oh, that goes for maintenance of the cruisers, um, and any, actually, equipment that's needed at that point there for the officers, um, office, staff, actually, whether it's paper at that point there, it's just actually our grouping of our office and patrol expenses.
Okay. And can I ask one more question?
Yes, and then Morawski.
Um, I'd like to ask the town manager, he kept the, he did not change their budget at all, so we're keeping that. Your recommendation is to keep it the same?
Well, I'm not actually authorized to weigh in on this budget.
You're not?
Yeah.
Councilor Morawski.
The radios, is that going to be on a CIP or is it...
Yes, on our CIP budget, yes.
Okay, and that's going to be in tune with what the town is doing?
Yes.
Councilor Heath.
Does the town, do you cooperate with the town police? Do they ever share patrols with you in your area? Do their radios work on...
Uh, no, actually, we're separate from the town at that point there. We do, if there's an issue, actually, just like there was early in the year, um, in Monford's Cove on the water there, uh, we do work in conjunction with them for life-saving or assistance at that point there. What happens, we're called on, actually, at some times, actually, when the town needs help as well, in the different subdivisions. So we have a good cooperation there.
Councilor Atwater.
So it's not a real true mutual aid kind of arrangement?
Yes, it is.
What is it? Okay. Uh, question, I, you, you mentioned that you've been cut five percent last year, five percent the year before. Uh, we don't have, I don't at least have budget history going back five or ten years, and now you're up twenty percent. Somehow that, that doesn't add up to getting back to being on a level playing field.
Um, years ago, we used to be funded at the same levels as the city at that point there. We've been reduced over the timeframe, actually, over many years. Um, our percentage actually went from like a thirty percent, we're up to like a thirty-four, thirty-five percent this year request. Um, last year, we would have been down to the low thirties at that point there. Um, we're just trying to actually get up to a little bit of level for our level at that point.
Councilor Heath.
I'm sorry, this doesn't really break anything down, so I don't know what, what would be driving your costs, is, is it...
Uh, really, our contractor, our medical.
Medical. And how much is that up?
Oh, actually, the contract's up about two and a half percent, um, this year, and medical's up about like every other one, five or six percent.
Trying to remember correctly, um, I thought your department tried to handle retired troopers and retired officers from other departments so as to provide cost savings as far as benefits. Is that no longer the case?
We try when we can, but it isn't available all the time. So we don't have, actually, um, every, every hire isn't that way anymore. We try to get experienced people when we can.
So we're looking at, um, so the two eighty-eight represents less than half of the public safety budget for Groton Long Point Association.
It should be around thirty-two percent, if I remember right.
Is that correct, thirty-two percent?
Normally, it should have been fifty, fifty percent, but Groton Long Point cut, cut it back, uh, back about ten years ago to the thirty-two percent.
Is there any other question or discussion for the gentleman from Groton Long Point? Yes, Councilor Zepari.
Uh, I would like to move an amendment to that to give them a five percent raise, which would be, uh, twelve thousand, uh, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars more than they have asked for here.
Can you give us the full total, please?
Well, I'm trying to do the math, and it's, uh, I'm afraid you were calling the issue before I was quite ready.
Two hundred and fifty-five thousand seven oh six is five percent.
There we go.
Okay. Can you, can you repeat the number, please? Because I didn't get it, and I don't think Ms. Molden got it.
Conrad has the number. Would you give the number, and I'll second it?
I'll make a motion for two hundred and fifty-five thousand seven hundred and six dollars.
Two hundred and fifty-five thousand seven hundred and six dollars moved by Heath, seconded by Zepari. And can you provide the rationale, please, either one of you?
Well, they, they, they haven't had an increase for two years. And they have, they have said they've had increase in expenses, but there is an inflationary rate that we can anticipate. If we gave you two and a half percent per year inflationary rate, the other increase in expenses is something that you have to, have to deal with. And I, and I just think that, considering that we're all under duress for funds, uh, we're giving you, we're respecting your, your claim for an increase in cost, but at the same time, we're ma, we're, we're trying to be responsible to the rest of the taxpayers in the town by keeping those costs down. So it's, it, it's almost arbitrary, but you can understand, but when we look at a twenty percent increase in one year, it's, 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 especially a year like this, when we're expecting to be, we have a decreased, uh, basis for our tax income, and we have decreased support from the state of Connecticut, uh, we're trying to keep from hurting our taxpayers as much as we have hurt them in the past. So, uh, I, I think there's a rationale for trying to make a compromise here.
Councilor Parker.
Um, if I can ask Cindy a question, or, or you guys, do you remember what the original number was last year? Because I was on the RTM when we, and we did cut it from the original number.
I think it was two sixty-two.
Two sixty-two, and then the year, you don't remember the year before that, do you?
We were, two fifty-four was the request or something like that.
We've been cutting, previous, all of us that were on before, we have been cutting each year for them. So for the last four years, I believe, if I'm correct, when, since I was on the RTM, I do remember this. I just would like the, if you happen to have the original numbers, then you can, I think that'll help somebody, everybody look at what we've done. That's the full amount. I'm talking about just the town.
While, while she is looking, Councilor Heath, did you want to add anything to your rationale for the motion?
No, just five percent.
Anyone else have comments while we're waiting?
Yeah, I, I want to go, I want to go back to that fifty percent. Originally, it was fifty percent. That would have brought the number to three, three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Groton Long Point has cut back a number of years and, and went to thirty-two percent. So now they're, now you're, you're, you're trying to cut them back even further. I think the fifty, if, if you're going to do thirty-two percent for Groton Long Point, then do thirty-two percent for the city. They have the same contracts, the, the, the wording is the same. Let's be fair about this. You know, to cut back that amount of money is, is going to certainly hurt us, a group that's, uh, doesn't get much revenue. And they already cut back from the third fifty percent, so, so I think we ought to keep it the same, or if we're going to do, cut them back to the thirty-two, then the city should be cut thirty-two percent, too.
This is an increase from last year. It's, it's a cut in the request, but it is still...
But I'm just saying, historically, this is what they've been doing.
I'm aware of that, but I present it as such. It's still a 12 percent increase.
You kept nickel-diming them over the years to the point where you want to cut a little bit more back, and I don't think it's fair at all. They cut back 10 years ago to the 32 percent so that we would...they wouldn't get nickel-dimed like this. What they're asking is fair. I know that these guys have cut their pencils real sharp.
Let's see if Finance Director has her number.
18.
What were you looking for, Representative...or Councilor Parker? I'm sorry.
18. Do you happen to have 17s while you're there, if you can?
What I have is what was adopted.
Good, okay.
For the police, for 16 was 250, for 17 was 245, for 18, the request was 262,500. The council reduced that to 249,375. The RTM reduced it to 243,530.
Is that the information you were looking for?
Yes, so eight...yes. 2018, we did do a cut. Town council, then the RTM did on top of that.
So Atwater and then Zepary?
I just had a question for Rich. That what we have here, the City of Groton's budget is going up 8.9 percent. And I know that's...that's the police. Why is Groton Long Point going up 18 or 20 percent if they were based on the same contracts and so forth?
It's 50 percent of the overall budget.
Is for the city?
For the city.
Whereas it's 32 for Groton-
It's 32 percent for Groton Long Point.
Councilor Zepary, are you willing to yield to Councilor Heath for a moment?
Are you willing to do what?
Yield. Can he go before you at this moment?
Yes.
Want to say something?
Sorry, just general practice is that the subdivision would pay for their chief in 50 percent, so I'm guessing last year they cut GLP or the year before a little bit further than they cut the city.
Councilor Zepary?
Pass. I've heard other people make comments that are-
All right. Is there any other comment or question at this point? Councilor Franco?
Who decides what your staffing level is? Is that due to the citizens living in your district, or do you just decide, or?
If I may take that. We're a municipal police agency. We're chartered under the state of Connecticut. There's one officer on duty 24 hours a day. I actually don't like to have to say that publicly, because it's, one, it's a matter of public safety, but it also draws a red flag to the criminal element. I also cover over top, and it's not part of this budget process, but I'm there about 60 to 70 hours a week overlaying the one officer that's on duty, and also afford on-call, call-in before any other emergencies are processed. So it's one officer 24 hours a day. That's it. Minimum staff for publications.
Do you have other questions? Councilor Schmidt?
Well, on the summary in the back of the book, I guess it's page 178 back in the back, it said that the total budget is $713,338 for public safety, and that the personnel cost is $501,016. Does that include the chief?
No.
No, that does not include the chief. But I think one-third of that, which would be a little bit more than 32 percent, would be $237,779. And you're requesting 288.
Right, actually, I mentioned before, while we were running, we're looking at this number would bring us up to about 36, 37 percent. 32 is what we went down to approximately 10 years ago.
Councilor Heath?
Sorry, if it went down to 32 percent 10 years ago and the city stayed at 50 percent, I don't know what the rationale was to reduce it to 32, but one of them is probably unfair.
Well, the reason they did it is they tried to cut back as far as they could on Groton Long Point, and after, I think they had the study, they tightened up as much as they could, and they basically said, well, 32 percent was...32.5 percent was reasonable, and they went from there. But medical and everything else has crept up and has caused this thing to go in a different direction, like we know everything else in the town has gone out.
I'm just trying to see if anybody else has it, because you've spoken many times. Does anybody who hasn't spoken yet wish to speak? Councilor Heath?
So our grant list stayed flat, and, you know, if we were to just do 5 percent for both, you know, police stations, that maintains the current, what's called the unfairness, if you will. But why this year? Why increase it this year? Why not next year or two years from now? It's been 10 years out of whack.
Actually, with the increase in the contract costs and everything else at that point, there's...you reached the point at that point there, trying to get back on a level playing field, and we're not going to a level playing field. We're just trying to get up at that point to something close. And not ask for the full amount, actually, years ago that they did do.
Any further discussion or questions? So where we are with this is we have, again, a first amended number. We'll vote that first amended number. It's 255,000. If that fails, then we go back to the original, which is the 288. So are you prepared to vote on the first amended figure? Okay, so first amended figure for...too many pages. 10910, Groton Long Point Police, $255,706. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so in favor was Zepary, Granatowski, opposed. Everybody else? Any abstentions? One abstention. So the abstention is Atwater. So that motion fails two to six to one. Do you need the names, or are you good? The in favor was Zepary and Granatowski. The opposed was Schmidt, Obree, Heath, Franco, Parker, Marosik. The abstention was Atwater. You're good? So that motion fails. So now we are back to the main motion, which is 288,750. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eight. One...any abstentions? Seven. One opposed, Zepary. One abstaining, Atwater. So 288,750 carries. Okay. 10911, Highway Maintenance. I don't know where we are. Who wants to move this?
I moved the figure of 189,000.
No, it's the wrong number.
Wrong number. Well, I'll move the one.
Yes. Mr. Atwater, or Councilor Atwater, would you like to move it?
I move Highway Maintenance, account number 10911, at 186,794.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Atwater?
Yes.
Seconded by Schmidt. And again, this is...there was...the chart on page 177 has the correct number. The cover letter has the incorrect number. The budget book on page 187 has the incorrect number. So Mr. Flynn informed us that the 186 is indeed the correct number. So it's 186794, and this is for the highway budget. And this is the thing that's guided by the general statutes or Special Act charter that we pay what is necessary in profit for the funding of the highways in Groton Long Point. Questions? Councilor Heath?
The budget you've presented doesn't have a line item for the personnel, so I'm wondering if...what's in the personnel?
Oh, we hire outside contractors to do the work for that part, or volunteer effort, actually, at Groton Long Point. We don't have a staff, actually, for public works.
So who pays for your director of public works?
He's paid, actually, as a director, actually, by the association itself, but no salary is given to him. He has a stipend as a director. The rest of the time, he gets to work for free.
Councilor Marosik?
Just going to say, when I was Public Works Director down there, I put in 30 hours a week. I got paid $100 a month, because I think that was a separate payment that the order directors got. So the guys don't get paid much down there. It's real cheap. The thing is, I noticed that you're, instead of $22,000 a mile, you're up to $26,000 a mile, well under what the town is paying for their roads, and I think we're doing a wonderful job down here with the town doing the paving, and I'm wondering why the city isn't doing the same.
I know. We've been lucky enough in the last few years, working with the bond issue, working with City Public Works Director Gary Snyder, and being able to keep our costs down, to do more work, actually, down at Groton Long Point. And they do a beyond-excellent job. They really do. We fit into their schedule. That's the key thing. When they have an open day or two, we have to be ready, because if not, they can't do anything for us. But we're lucky enough to be flexible enough for them to work with us, and it's reduced the cost dramatically, which is great, and allow us to do more work down there. Our increase, a lot of it unfortunately, is because of the roads and as the town and the city has deterioration. We have the same thing, especially with the catch basins and the road work at that point, and not to bring up the bad word, erosion around the point, around the coastal erosion.
Sorry, what?
As everybody has the same problems on that.
Are there any other questions? Councilors, a pair, and then Heath?
There's a bridge, the Groton Long Point Road. There's a bridge that goes to Groton Long Point. Is that in satisfactory condition, or is that nearing a problem?
Well, actually, we've gone through the study, actually, for a couple of years now on the funding, actually, issue, and there's, again, we all understand the funding issues at that point. I think it's still rated a four.
I'm sorry?
I think it's still rated a four in the rating of a bridge, I think, Rick. I think it's...it's up to a four, which is okay. We just finished the paving on the Groton Long Point side, so the road is paved, actually, through to Mufford's Cove and through in, through us to Drury A on that road, so the road is in good condition. The bridge itself is still a very good bridge. It was built, it handled all the storms so far in excellent way.
Not deteriorating. I've heard people complain to me that that bridge was deteriorating.
The cement's okay. It's in good shape. It isn't...there's a lot of other bridges in a lot worse shape than ours. That's basically what it is.
If I might add, that bridge was built in 1935 with I-beams that were oversized, and they placed those I-beams on concrete abutments that...they're not going to move. But the outer facing of the abutments, the facade, looks bad. Looks like it's weathering over the ages. And then the surface, the paving surface, needs to certainly be looked at on the Groton town side. But other than that, the bridge itself will stay for a number of years, but we got, you know, there's some maintenance, minor maintenance. It would be nice to replace that bridge with a causeway rather than to rebuild over the existing bridge.
Mr. Burke, do you need to address any of the comments that were made, or is it all accurate?
Yeah, I brought that point from Gary's here since under the CIP portion.
Thank you.
We have figures in page 177. There are figures for different items that you're requesting for this year, but they don't...we don't have figures to compare them with previous years.
Oh, okay. I apologize. I believe our budget's up a little bit over last year. I think actually last year we were... 169?
Yeah, it's up $20,000.
I hope it was higher. Might have been a higher request.
No, 169. You did vote our request last year at that point, because we're, again, I think Gary was here that night, too. We're tremendously under what the town or the city requests for funding on the roads. But again, the increase actually is because of the amount of work on the roads that are being done, because of, you know, we've got some depressions that are growing now than they weren't before. We spent a tremendous amount fixing two roads that weren't in the road replacement plan because of the washout underneath them at that point, and that was just over years. That just happened to create a sinkhole.
Councilor Heath?
No knowledge, no there.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
So you don't have a director of public works. You don't really have staff. Do you have a...I see you have a request for a brush hog, but do you have other kinds of equipment?
We actually, we have a truck that's under our Public Works Department. Actually, we bought two or three years ago at that point there, and we keep it very clean if we can, for as long as we can keep it actually there. We also actually have a tractor, actually, that's going to be used for our beach cleaning, and it'll be used to run the brush hog, so we don't have to pay outside people to do that. We can have the services done in-house, meaning volunteer. So it keeps up with our road maintenance at that point there and the growth of the invasives actually along there. So we're trying to cut our costs, actually. So if we don't have to hire a contractor to come and do that, we have a lot more money. We're just going to do it ourselves and cut costs.
Then do we need to buy the brush hog this year, or is that something that could be postponed?
Yeah, we actually, we spent quite a bit last year and the year before on doing that work. This will cut our costs in half by doing that. The contractors outside are anywhere from eight to $10,000 every time we have them come in. It's tremendous money, and that's only a small section. We hope to do three times as much with this instead.
Councilor Franco? So you bought machinery to clean the beaches, or did the town pay for that?
No, we paid for that.
You paid for that? And how did you afford it? It's probably, what, like $45,000, $50,000 machine?
Actually, a little bit less than that at that point there, plus a tractor to pull it, plus a trailer to take the seaweed to the seaweed dump. And that's under our CIP program that the association pays for.
Okay.
I think the town is looking at buying a machine. Perhaps it could be shared. Is that something that is possible that we could do, that we could contract with Groton Long Point to use that, or?
Impossible, actually. We're looking to use it five days a week on the beaches.
Well, then probably not. That's your point. We're looking right down the street from that.
Right, that's your point.
That was just brought up to us last week by the people who came up to visit you, and then Gary, I think I talked to, both Steve and both Charlie Premiano, our Beach Dock and Lagoon Director. So just hearing about that. And again, why we're doing ourselves is the same problem you have. Nobody's doing it out there. The equipment, they don't want to buy them at that point. The one that we had is in such poor service, it may show up once a week, and you just can't. It's getting worse and worse. So it's cheaper over the long run. Just do it yourself.
Councilor Heath?
Do you have public beaches in Groton Long Point for everyone in the town, or is it just GLP residents?
GLP is a association private, so it's just for GLP.
Then I'll move a second number. $182,394.
One more time, please. 182.
182, 394.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Heath, seconded by Zepary. Could you like to give your rationale?
I know, I'm coming here from a town resident from the city, but I'm not from the area. But that being said, Eastern Point does have passes available for anyone in the town. They just need to buy the pass. So I object to buying...nothing against you, just buying a brush hog for a beach that's not being used by town, by the whole town, if that makes sense.
That's not used for the beach. A beach cleaning machine is the beach cleaning machine. The brush hog actually is used for along the roadways at that point to keep the invasive back, actually, there, all the growth that comes in the road at that point there from basically along, along the roadway itself. We're getting down the brush and the trees and that kind of stuff. That's what it's used for, all the roads.
I will withdraw my objection to that, then. I should ask the question instead of...
Sorry about that.
So he's withdrawing his motion. Are you withdrawing your second?
No.
No?
But there's no motion for me to second if he's withdrawing his motion.
We're Barbara when you need her.
We usually withdraw both.
Yes, we usually withdraw both. If the person who made the motion withdraws, then the second is usually gracious and withdraws as well.
I'm not gracious. I'm stubborn.
Good discretion.
I just, frankly, I see, again, I see a sizable increase in the budget, and it's borne by the entirety of the town. It's more of an increase than the rest of the town is enduring. I know that there's been an argument that the Groton Long Point is somehow related to the City of Groton. I don't understand that rationale, but it's still a very...it's a substantial increase in the budget over last year, and it's in a year when we have reduced funds coming in. I don't think it's a time to favor one district of the town over the rest, and I think I would rather see us stay closer to the prior year's budget.
Councilors, a pair, may I make a suggestion, please? If you would withdraw your second, you could put a new number on the floor.
It...I think it makes very little difference. I have full confidence that the rest of you will vote my opinion down, but I still think I have a fiduciary responsibility to the people who elected me to look out for their interests. If you want a number, I would put down...
Would you withdraw your second first, please?
I will withdraw my second.
Thank you.
And I will make a motion for $179,000. And I will make a motion for one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars.
First amended motion by Zepary for one seventy-nine, eight thirteen. Is there a second?
I will second.
Seconded by Heath. You too. All right. And your rationale, do you want to add anything to your rationale?
Just the same thing I said before. We have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers. Everybody else is tightening their belt at the same time. One district is saying, hey, we need 10 and 20 percent increases. We all need 10 and 20 percent increases. The libraries need more money than we gave them. Everybody needs more money than we gave them. We have to tighten our belts and everybody has to feel the cinch. Not just one, not just one district doesn't have to feel the cinch as much as the others. So I think it's only fair to ask Groton Longpoint to share the burden of decreased funds with the rest of the town. That's all I'm saying.
So if I did my math correctly, that's a 4 percent reduction from the request. Does that sound about right? It's still an increase from the prior year, but it is a reduction from what was requested. Did any, did you want to address anything? Any other comments or questions?
Comment, just wanted to mention that the beach cleaner is done, is done by a private contractor. And the town manager can also get that same contractor to do Escapoint Beach and East Beach, if that's necessary too.
What's East Beach?
To the seaweed, to remove the seaweed.
He meant Eastern Point Beach.
And the other thing is, if the brush hog is going to be cut out of the budget, I would assume that the brush hog that's up there at the town hall or in the city can be also used by Groton Longpoint.
Mr. Schneider's not here to tell us.
Any equipment that the town has could be used either by the city or Groton Longpoint.
It doesn't always work that way. We've talked about that in the past because.
But now it seems like we're making that decision.
We haven't made any decision. I'm just trying to point out to you, in the past, when we've looked at doing this with street sweeping, for example, it doesn't work out because at the same time, one part of town wants to street sweep their streets, the other part of town is on the same schedule. So it doesn't always work that way that the equipment can be shared in that manner. So we are looking at one seventy-nine, eight one three for one zero nine one one, Highway Maintenance. Is there any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars for one zero nine one one, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Schmidt, Parker, Morovsik, any abstentions? Atwater. So five in favor, three opposed, one abstaining. So one seventy, did I do that math right? Five, three, one is nine. So one seventy-nine, eight one three passes for one zero nine one one. So one zero nine one two, street lighting. Could you move the number for street lighting, please?
Is it the right one?
I believe so.
I move the figure of sixteen thousand, two hundred and forty-one for street lighting, Groton Longpoint.
Moved by Obrey, seconded by Parker. Is there any discussion on the street lighting in Groton Longpoint?
Keep them on.
Counselors, Zepary.
Why is it increasing from thirteen thousand up to sixteen thousand?
Actually, I can't answer that. It's actually a number given to you by Groton Utilities, not by us.
Is there an increase in electrical costs?
Yes.
By that much?
Well, I don't know the exact figures, but I know that they did make a change. And now there's a base fee that has to be paid on every bill, so they are going up.
Counselor Heath.
Are they replacing light fixtures?
They're supposed to be, but we don't have a time factor, a factor from them yet, actually. But just like they did in Mystic, actually, in the other outskirts, they're doing hopefully the same thing. Hopefully. We don't have the answer though.
They replaced one in front of my house and it's really bright now. But it's only break down, not like all of the.
They changed some of them.
Some have, yeah. But we, you know, it's, they're moving us along, so we're growing, I guess, on that, but not yet.
Are there any other questions on the street lighting? Seeing none, we'll vote on one zero nine one two, street lighting, in the amount of sixteen thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much for having us.
So we are at the point where we need to recess. I believe that's all we're taking for today, correct, Mr. Manager?
Correct.
So we need to recess until Monday at 6:00. If someone would make a motion, please.
Make a motion to recess until Monday, April 9th at 6:00 P.M.
Moved by Heath.
Second.
Seconded by Parker. All those in favor of recessing until Monday, April 9th at 6:00 P.M. say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously.